I'd like to call the board the Shakopee School Board of Work Session for April 14, 2025. Tiffany, can you please do the roll?
Sidik.
Here.
Valdez.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Aldrich.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Brophy.
Here.
Michelle.
Here.
And Shawna.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Always like to see you packed room. And we get to start with the favorite part of our meeting, the favor of pride. And first up, we have item 3.1, the ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. ASBO is the Association of School Business Officials International. And Joe will present our recognition.
I'd like to congratulate Bill Nazi and his team for the fifth consecutive year of giving this certificate of excellence in financial reporting. Roughly 25 districts of the 331 East Christie School District in Minnesota received this certification. And basically, just with financials, the clear, accurate, accurate in San Francisco, financial transparency, and I know that Bill and his team have been working really hard over the last several years for the district to be able to give that credit. On behalf of the board, congratulate him and his team. And also, at the same time, our bond rating has increased to A1. It's the third time it's been upgraded in the last four years. Back in 21, it was the A1, and it's been upgraded three times since then to A1. So again, that's great for the district if you have any kind of refinancing on your bonds that would be doing. That would help with insurance rates and everything, but it just would end up taking taxpayers' money. So Cameron, on behalf of the board, congratulations to Bill and his team. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next, on our agenda is item 3.2, Volunteer Appreciation Month Spotlight. And here present is Lisa Ron, our Director of Community Education, and Melissa Spinski, our District Volunteer Coordinator. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Chair Snep and school board members. We're very honored to be here. Again, my name's Lisa Ron. I'm the Community Education Director. And this is Melissa Spinski, and she is our volunteer coordinator for the district, so she takes care of volunteers in the district. So we're here today to honor the exceptional volunteers of Shakopee Public Schools, those that have gone above and beyond dedicating hundreds of hours to special projects and providing invaluable support. Our district is incredibly fortunate to have 2,342 dedicated volunteers who have collectively contributed 5,700 hours. So that's a remarkable effort, and that translates into an estimated value of roughly $190,000 for schools based on the national hourly rate for volunteer work that Scott County uses when they quantify the impact of volunteers. So that's pretty incredible. And our volunteers' commitment and spirit are truly invaluable to the community.
Our volunteers are driven by a genuine love for what they do. Their contributions are vast and vital, filling needs across many areas. They'll find it in workrooms, assisting with tasks of cutting and laminating and organizing materials, as well as accompanying students on field trips and providing support in reading and math. They're also integral to student well-being, helping with vision and hearing screenings and other checks across the district. Beyond direct student interaction, our volunteers are also dedicating their time to the PTO and various district committees. They organize events and enhance our school environments by beautifying the buildings and tending to the gardens. They ensure that our learning resources are well-maintained by organizing bookrooms and even building shelves and carts. Furthermore, they play a crucial role in supporting our educators by helping to prepare and organize new curriculum, which allows teachers to focus on what they can best teach and build relationships. The impact there of our volunteers extends far beyond their tasks. One volunteer fondly remembers being affectionately known for an entire grade, the entire five years that goes kids way in the building, which is a testament in connection to the appreciation that they foster throughout the school, not just the staff, but the children as well. The dedication and care for volunteers is deeply valued by both staff and communities alike. We will now honor our recipients of our above and award, above and beyond award. These people have been nominated by their specific schools as people that have gone above and beyond the call of duty in their volunteering, in their building and other buildings as well. And we would just like to give a shout out to all of them for helping so much in our district, making it a better place. So volunteers, we will call your names as those are being read. Lisa will hand you your certificate, and we'll have you line up here over by the TV so that we can grab a picture when we're all done. All right. Rita Senns. Sharon Anderson. Nicole Wilson. Christina Xander. Marina Nazarenko. Diane Bowen. Sonia Kelchin. Kimberly Sidik. You can clap. Laura Gray. Sandy Boyce. Amanda Felins. Janet Johnson. Ray Berger. Jerelyn Berger. Misty Van Boerst. Sue Holly. Laurel Dorn. Mitt Hudson. Marla Hudson. Catherine Maya. Kelly Reese. Carrie Owens. Valerie Lewis. Erin Hallman. Kathy Clark. Brenda Kahani. And Donna Mahowal. Ironically enough, a lot of people couldn't come tonight because their PTO events, fundraiser events for the district.
Now we get the big cheer, and then we'll take a photo, so let's go.
Next on our agenda is item four, the consideration of the agenda that has presented. Second, a motion by Aldrich and a second by Brophy. Discussion. See none. Almost in favor. Aye. Opposed? Next on our agenda is item five, public comment. This is the time where members of the public can participate in the meeting without being part of the meeting agenda. A member of the public may address the board on an agenda topic or on another topic. We allocate a total of 15 minutes for public comment at this meeting. Each individual speaker may speak for up to 2.5 minutes. The sign up for public comment has been conducted online and in person prior to the meeting. No one has signed up for public comment prior to the meeting. We will move on to the next item on the agenda. Next on our agenda is item 6.1, the City of Shakopee latest news and developments. And we are pleased to have Bill Reynolds, the Shakopee City Administrator. How can I help?
Well, thank you all very much for having me. I sincerely appreciate it. I thought everybody was here.
They'll be right back.
Yeah. Just want to get a drink or something. So let me start off by saying thank you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for the strong partnership that we have. It's really is good to have two strong pieces of the organization when you think of it from taxi bodies. We have the county, the city, and the school district. I'm going to talk briefly about what we do and where we are in that. But I did want to say that at the very beginning, you know, we can't do what we do unless we have strong partners. You have consistently been a strong partner to the city, and we sincerely appreciate all you do and everything that benefits all of our residents, students, and parents. So thank you very much. So let's talk good news. Matter of fact, this is all going to be good news. I'm sorry if you were looking to have something that you wanted to be able to down about before you went home. That's not today. This is all good news. And you'll see why I say that as we continue to move through this presentation. First of all, we continue to be one of the lowest tax communities. Yes, you probably heard, if I give any public speech at all, I'm going to say this. We continue to be one of the lowest tax communities in the state. We are the seventh lowest taxed out of 60 cities with more than $20,000 and the eleventh lowest taxed out of 103 cities with $10,000. That was 2023 information, by the way. We are higher. We just don't have the data to be able to prove it, but that is the case as it stands today. Our tax capacity has continued to increase. This year in 2025, it's 5.5. You can see it's different than what we've had in the past. It's a little lower. But there are communities out there today that would kill that had 5.5% growth. And it only looks low when it's compared to what we've done since 2021. And stable tax rates, which is also another thing that we're very concerned about. And we continue to have either falling or stable tax rates, tax rates now for eight straight years. So we're pretty proud of that as well. Not only are we one of the lowest tax communities when you look at our comparable cities in the state, we are the lowest when it comes to all of those things that residents may be concerned about, not just taxes, but water, sewer, et cetera. And that's something else we're very proud of. And once again, that allows us the opportunity to do other things. And frankly, to be perfectly blunt, it allows you more room to do what you need to do, which is certainly not a bad thing when you think about it. Our strong growth continues, and we are not seeing this come down at all. Matter of fact, just today, we had another big project come and hit the drawing board, so I cannot see it going down. Right now, we have 700 apartments, 1,373 single-family townhomes. And at the Eagle Point Estates, the gravel pit is put together. We'll have a bunch more homes there, too. The other ones, everything but the Eagle Point Estates, those are on the ground or in process right now. So those are going to happen. The Eagle Point Estates will depend upon whether or not the city council is willing to TIF that particular development. If that does happen, it's going to be a big game changer for that whole side of the city. Commercial, industrial, man, again, been down to Canterbury area in a while. You'll see all the stuff that we're doing there. Obviously, the amphitheater is the big other piece of our crown jewels as the Midwest number one entertainment destination, by the way. You can talk about that. It's okay. We are a place for people who want to come and play. And the amphitheater is 19,900 seats. It started out as a $35 million project. It is now a $65 million project, not because of inflation, because the individual building saw something better, and he wanted us to top it. So we're excited about that, and you know, you'll be hearing more obviously as we continue to smooth towards construction. Canterbury Crossing, that whole area is a $450 million investment. The city has $31 million in TIF invested into it. We've done all the infrastructure, all the roads, sewers, streets, et cetera, for that particular project. And there's a lot more coming. I think if you go down, you'll see, down there, you'll see bulldozers scraping stuff. That's because they're not doing it just to make things look nice. We've got things in the hop and more on that to come as well. We have GN Resound. They're coming into the old Shutterfly place. Shutterfly, when it was fully operational, had about 250 personnel that worked in there. GN is consolidating their North American headquarters. They are an international organization. They are Danish. They do everything from hearing aids to changing headphones to other things dealing with sound. And they are coming here and are in the process when they're done with rebuilding the interior of the old Shutterfly building. They'll have over 900 employees here. And you know, where Shutterfly's wages were here, GN's will be here. And obviously, if you just tour around, the city, you see businesses opening up all over the place. Like I said, the future's bright. We got a lot going on. We are estimated to be over 50,000 this year in 2025. With just the housing that we have in the pipeline that we talked about a little earlier, we're at 56 and a half for in population. You know, and then obviously, we have all kinds of other things besides just population. But you know, some great parks we're building, Jackson Community Regional Park is being put together now as we speak, among others. The Dog Park is finally coming to the west side of the community, which I know people have been curious about, and that's in the process of moving forward as well. That is what I have. Always feel free to reach out to me or any of my staff if you have any questions or concerns. I would like to say that I sincerely appreciate my good partner, Dr. Redmond, and everything that we do. We don't always agree, but the interesting thing is, is that we can normally find a way to work around that and find a solution that's best for the whole of the community. And I think that's very important with any leadership of any organization. So I sincerely appreciate everything that Mike has done for us, and I consider it an honor to be his co-collaborator in crime.
I would echo that sentiment. No crime.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions?
For?
So kind of a two-part question. You referenced tax capacity.
Yeah.
If you could just spill that down, do what is included in that number? And then the follow-up question, growth is generally favorable, right? And we're seeing a lot of growth. Do you feel the pace of growth is sustainable? That is, it's, you know, not too much too soon.
Yeah. So when we talk about tax capacity, we're talking about the overall value of the community as a whole. And so then that becomes a big number, and then you can tax up to a portion of that. But basically, what we're talking about is your tax base is growing, and so that means your tax capacity is growing.
Both residential and commercial, like all encompassing?
Absolutely. Residential, commercial, agriculture in Shakopee is not growing. I don't know if you know this, but it's the only area that's not.
And our pace of growth is like, it's a healthy pace or a way?
It is. I think when we were looking a couple of years ago, when we were at 19% growth, we were a little concerned to be upfront. And so we took a step back and we started taking a look at things, making sure we had the infrastructure in place to be able to support that. But now that we have 5.5% this year, and then, you know, we are in some unstable times, we'll see what next year holds, but I'm very comfortable with where we are today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Bill.
Well, enjoy your meeting.
Yeah, Bill, thank you very much. Thanks for all you do.
Take care.
Feel free to stay. We've got a lot to talk about.
My dog used to go.
Next on our agenda is item 6.2, the Southwest Metro Intermediate School District 288 latest news and update. And here to present is Jeff Horton, the Southwest Metro Superintendent. Welcome, Jeff. This is your first time here since becoming superintendent, right?
It is, absolutely.
Congratulations.
Okay. Yes, happy year very much. I'm kind of leading my two-year going around meeting different boards. And that was the board, student representatives, president. We very much were happy. I really appreciate it. Just being here in the last nine months has been exciting, just to see the progress you've made in the last nine months, which clearly you've been building upon and set the foundation four years before, and we're seeing those outcomes academically. We're seeing that in terms of where you're getting community partnership with them. Saw that year recent operating levy recently, your community support behind you as a school district, so the drag additions and all your success and all of our whole things there to come. Just want to give a quick introduction to myself and then our school district, things we've been working on. And then give you an opportunity to answer any questions or asking questions that I can answer. I've heard that's what we've been saying all weekend, trying to keep folks. It's the whole handling. So Southwest Metro Schools. So this is our executive director team. Melissa Canel is our executive director of teaching and learning. Emily Craig is our executive director of special services. Unfortunately, she did take another decision. She's an amazing leader, and she has a future opportunity. We're always excited to see her to just go on to do amazing things. So we'll interview her for that position soon, but she's a great partner, and she's been doing great things to help make sure that plan is handed off well. Natasha Melso is our executive director of community resources. And then Nicole Schmidt has just joined us. She comes from Oxford, North East Allen, and she actually, prior to us, was overseeing the year-end school districts. So we've heard, and she has a lot of traditional school experience, which brings everybody to perspective to hear. And then Rick Robson, our director of communications. So what the heck is an intermediate school district? That's something I've had when I get elder speech down. So my elder speech is, I like to say, it's a hybrid district. It's a hybrid of what traditional districts do, but also kind of a service agency. So we kind of live both worlds. It's actually defined in Statute though. So if you take a look at Statute, there's a huge focus on both secondary and post-secondary in the middle learners. And that's, I think, an area that is, we've got our assessments that we can continue to grow. When I think about the amazing work you're doing in your pathways and the programs that you're doing, how can we complement that work and support that? And so we recently did a gap analysis, which I'll talk a little bit about later, to understand where you're at, your vision and your work, and then how we can come in and be a partner to support that, that your pathway pursues, as well as go about any of the learnings. So why do we have intermediate school districts? There's four of them across all four areas. We serve 20,000, 30,000 students a year. Our area spans from Upper Funtel to South of La Cita. And then far west is the Edmondco and over to Burnsville, Burnsville, leading area with our associate members and our regular members. But really, it's a way of that regional development, how we're together as a teaching. How do we think about cyber borders? How do we collaborate? Intermediates really can offer that. How are we that collaborative partner for you to make things go ahead? Maybe we'd be really hard to do a digital district or help me enhance some of the other things that you're doing. So the intermediate's here, 120 specialized different programs. I can clean software across the metro. We have a lot ready, different services specialize as a big piece of them. So when students qualify for special education services, can be there in some tradition district. We offer other settings and other opportunities that will be successful. Some of our big ones are adult education. So we have a very strong adult education program. We have a lot of classes right now for new country folks, learning ELL, ELL2. And so as we see lots of growth in the community, we're seeing different groups come to Shakopee. It's such a great place. Finding ways to meet their needs is one thing that we do. We're continuing to work on that development, both from the sort of chamber congress and with our member districts. We also have alternative learnings like ALC. So it's Southwest Metro High School. We have online school. We have parent treatment for students who need day treatment to meet their mental health needs. We have career technical education courses, and then we have special education classes as well. Oh, yeah. Okay. I see it's in a different order than I had. Okay. I did a brain switch. My order was different. Okay. Or this is what we call it, is online. Perfect. Okay. So in the adult education area, we have courses in citizenship. We have English language courses. We have the GND prep program, and we do a lot of family literacy courses, as I previously mentioned. We have New Beginnings, which is a really cool program for both moms and dads. If a student has a child who doesn't school with us, both moms and dads may enroll in this program with us. And so we have childcare for them. We do parenting classes with them as well, to help them get their high school. So we really wrap them around in that way. Like I said, they're ALC and the parent recovery for students who may feel a little loose there. Our online program, that is a whole suite of courses. You can jump into anything, everything online through that. But you have to track out lots of online learning. We also have an heavy emphasis on contractors and social work, really not just creating courses, but really kind of that whole child education piece. And we do that through both the singleness and we singleness courses, depending on the social level and the course. Career technical education, so similar to the different pathways that you have. We have a number of pathways based around this sort of career cluster. I do think that there's gaps in there that we need to look at when we look at the local industry here. In Shakopee, we see that between ages 18 and 30, people disappear. They go other places. You don't have a local community college. They go to COVID tech or what have you. They go somewhere else, right? To get that education. We have lots of jobs where people may work in right out of high school, most trades, positions in particular. We think about where they end their experience in the Shakopee system and how can we do that post-secondary piece with them. So those are areas we're continuing to explore with the city, with your, with our member districts. Special services, autism, that's ASB. Cognitive disabilities, that's ECD, and emotional behavioral disorder, that's EBD. Those are students who may qualify for additional services that can't be met in your school. So they come to our dance, and they spend most of their day in special education there. That's the reason I said most. It turns services and then transition, which is your 18 to 22 students. So after some students don't finish at 18, they continue on to your combination. Additionally, just some things that we're working on. Hiring in our space is challenging just like all. But because we have such a high number of students receiving special education services and different rules and different licensure requirements, hiring for special education is very challenging. When I started July 1st, over 30-some percent of our physicians were open for this area. We had figured out a way to get that figured out pretty quickly to meet our member districts and students. So one of those programs is ITRAC. And so we have some one-time funding from the state. And it looks like in the legislative package right now that funding is set through the new, which is kind of exciting. We'll see where it ends. But this is a program that helps us help some of you from a professional to a teacher through apprenticeship program. And we're the first registered apprenticeship program in the state. Some other organizations have been confused to think that they were first, but we're truly first. So think of it as like if you're a carpenter or electrician, might go through an apprenticeship program. They haven't existed in our state for education. They, you know, and we're the first. And so hopefully, we'll get that influx of money from the state program. Drive for Five, we just recognized that it's going to be Shakopee for this and our work with them in partnership on how we're coming together to help those certain income thresholds get into the workforce. And so if your income can't be too high to qualify this program, and then we find ways to wrap around it, try those experiences in each job and help people. So that's been a great partnership with the county. So that's a little bit about where our programs are. This is where I spend a lot of my time. Coming into, I've been a superintendent before, been assistant superintendent, the principal, and the director of special education. So more to that in my career. But anytime I enter this space, learning about the organization, listening, serving, or understanding what is their current state. And so the first thing I did, 900-day plan, has did over 1,000 engagements with superintendents, board members of various districts, staff, students, our families, our community, to really just listen. I did a three-to-one activity. I sat down and gave everybody, well, one minute just to figure what's going on and just let them do their free ride. There's always during a transition, there's always a lot of thoughts and feelings, and so we just have to clear that space. Then I asked them, what are three opportunities or what are three great things about Southwest Metro? What are two about? What are two opportunities for growth? And then, um, Dr. Reddman may not tell you this, but they'll have a super superintendent one, we can wave our wand and make anything happen. So it was, in fact, you wave my magic wand and make it happen for you. What goal can we accomplish this year? And so they laid that out. Um, took all that data, we crunched it together, we used a little generative AI tools and kind of condensed that for us. And then we shared that with our, with our teams and with our board members who are some of them. And that kind of sets some initial decision making, uh, with what we were doing. Opinions are wonderful and feedback is wonderful, but we also needed ground data and research best practices. So then we started doing our needs assessments. Uh, we did, uh, teaching and learning. So we took apart our system and we drilled down and did a cost analysis using tools from N E R and implementation science. The best, these best practices to figure out how we can improve student outcomes. We then have our member districts and superintendents who brought their teams, which thank you very much for every contribution to Chakatee. Uh, it was great to have them there and they talked about across our whole member system, what are the gaps that we have? Um, and our learning, what are the things that we can do really well? And so they had a chance to share things that are going really well. We also got a chance to say, where could Southwest Metro help fill those gaps? We put a lot of money into elementary literacy, right? That's where we put a lot of resources. Uh, but when we get to those little high schools, there's the math, you know, how are we, how are we getting that? And so we found across our system, kind of specific to Chakatee, across our system, doesn't period maybe some further conversation and how we can really do some things. Uh, safety and security, using tools from, uh, from, uh, the National Safety Center. We did, uh, one thousand to twelve hundred questions with many on the site. Uh, it's about a six hour assessment with each site to understand our safety and security. Uh, we did a building facilities assessment. Uh, will architects help with that, with that piece? Understand their current traditional facilities, where we need to go in the future. We all understand that costs are, are challenging and overall districts, we have to find a path forward that's cost-effective and manageable, but still things with our students. Uh, we also did a state's analysis of that, to make sure we're maximizing utilization and that we're, our systems are built, they're set properly to support students. Uh, communications, H R and, uh, finance, or some other areas we did as well. Once we completed that working chain, we moved into our graduate campaign. So we simply asked our community, what are the characteristics of a Southwest Metro graduate? What are the skills they should have in the university system? Throughout this whole process, we had over thirty-eight thousand bucks, bucks exchanged. Uh, I don't know what it was the last time we did strategic planning, but I think we were probably down around two hundred or so. I don't have the exact number, so that's percentage-wise, it's pretty great growth. And so we're pretty excited about engagement we're getting right now, um, with our community and that's great. So that is leading us into where we are now, which is our strategic planning process. Our board is kind of, is hating towards a little grunt of the word, kind of finalizing what goals and what their mission and vision is for Southwest Metro. And, uh, my share here something is, uh, helping spearhead that effort, effort. So thank you for that. And that helps me, uh, understand the direction that our organizations want to go collectively. And it gives me something to be held accountable to, which is really important, you know? If this is what the voice of our community, the research is saying, that's what I should be held, that's what I should be held accountable as well as our leadership and staff. So excited to see where that lands. Um, and then the final piece of that will be studying our budget, which is a reflection of our priorities. And that's coming up in the next couple of months, once we best understand that. Uh, there's a lot of needs and a lot of work to do, but we've done a lot of, uh, I think we've created a lot of efficiencies throughout the year by listening to people. We better streamline our funds and to get that work done, we'll continue trusts, which will support our member districts to continue to do great work, figuring out all our students. That is a little bit about Southwest Metro and what your need is and what we've been working on. And I'm excited to see where we go next after our board panel's set that strategic plan. More questions?
One, one thought I have, you talked about budget. I'm just curious, cause we're, we're talking about budget here. We got the budget on our agenda tonight. How does budget for intermediate school district work? Very question. Hopefully that's two, not two mega cannes, but I'm, I'm just curious how, how that works compared to a, a general school district.
The largest budget I've ever done in leadership is a hundred and sixty million dollars. And we had a reserve fund that I walked through, we had a reserve fund down to a hundred thousand dollars. So that's one at eighteen. So across a system that size of twenty-three sites, we had to be pretty, pretty accurate, right? So I like to, I like to think that I, there's always room to grow, but I know a few things about budget. There's always more to learn, but I know a few things. And that's the success of that. Walking into intermediate, when I first walked in, it was a different ballgame. Like it's, 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 it's a little bit different. So trying to understand how all this works and the way our organization had been kind of grown, I guess, for the last ten years from, uh, or even fifteen years from a small head district to verging to verse second and then doing intermediate expansion. It's interesting to see how that's over. So, um, we're actually developing new tools, new academy tools. Prior to, to me being there, um, Dr. Reddman, I'm sure you got a chance to kind of experience some of this too. So feel free to, if you're sure you want, uh, we're doing, we're right now building a budget models that will be able to better tell our member districts what they expect from costs. So not just what here's our overall cost, but then a breakdown. And so you can see from here to here where your expenditures are and how that is coming. And so as this everybody's back to the member district, um, if you have more usage, for example, you have ten new students saying, I'm really high in fees. Well, then that might be some additional cost. And those ones that come from a ragged place, so some of it comes directly to us from the state. Some comes from, would come from Chakatee, and then there's kind of some other ways that'll kind of play some too. Uh, but what we really want to show is that, you know, given all programming costs, students the same, here's how that is changing over time. So you better prepare your budgets. Um, you can't figure out everything. You know, it's a projection and you do your best to do that. It's the same for me. But, um, we think we'll have some tools to help our superintendents and our board members better determine that to then help you be successful with your budgeting program.
Sounds more complicated.
Got a lot of laws to judge. It's, it's, it's been interesting to unpack.
Can I just add something one thing to that?
Please do.
Um, I know that previously, and I'm sure that you're doing the same thing, have worked very closely with all of the other members of the district. Business office managers, um, Bill, I know has been very helpful and instrumental in, in helping guide, um, I guess, the finances from, um, you know, here's how things maybe should be looked at or things to be considered. And then, as you said, we look at the usage. Uh, Chakatee obviously is one of the bigger schools in the member district. Um, and so we are the top user, at least the last information I had. Um, and so the costs are shared. To me, I almost look at it as we are one-eleventh of an owner of Southwest Metro District, or five, double, or whatever. We have one-eleven right now share in that facility. But from a cost perspective, it's really all the costs are shared based on usage. And Chakatee is the biggest user right now of the services at Southwest Metro, just because we are a bigger district. For example, Jordan is another member. Their usage is much lower, but they have fewer kids. And so I don't know, does everybody know who's all a member at Southwest Metro? I'm not sure what those member districts look like. I already mentioned kind of the geography, but it's, um, Chakatee, Prior Lake, Eastern Harbor County, Watertown there, Conia, Buffalo, Milbra Montrose, uh, Jordan, uh, Dupre.
Bell Plain.
Bell Plain.
Tri-City.
Tri-City. I know I'm doing the round table to the floor.
I know we voted, we approved the budget. The, the list is somewhere in a board packet from someone's back, but like, but it's a, speak to the complexity for giving the, like, you're trying to do a budget based on the, the member districts and in a sense, utilization and all that. I can absolutely appreciate the number of funding sources in that model. And then I have a follow-up question, but I don't want to advise you. So, uh, you know, we would kind of refer to this open enrollment you'd mentioned, and non-district, non-member districts can also participate, leverage the services. Is there the equivalent of like an open enrollment if those students leverage those services? Or is that funding that just somehow gets absorbed into the larger model?
That's a, that's a great question. The answer is it depends, like most great questions, right? The, uh, there, and this is some of the things that we're unpacking and trying to evaluate how it's been done in the past and how we can do that, maybe go a little better for it. Is it a program or is it a school? And those are some important questions to ask. And so, and some things, the referral base, like special education setting for that's a referral-based program. So the parent can't open and enroll into that. They have to work through an internal process. And every district's will develop a map of their processes. We see some systems that are good processes. We see some that are, they, they lack traditional teen services prior to that. So there's sometimes some back and forth. There'd be assessments, this is best with a student and have those conversations. Other ones, yes, students can all enroll from. And then we can accept, uh, non-member students. So you can do a cost structure where you want to have your member districts at the lowest cost point. But by bringing in non-members or associate members, the theory behind that is that you can bring in additional revenues to offset your member district costs, right? So example might be, uh, you might be eight point eight, they might be a point nine M P. And another one might be some goal plus some five percent added, like some structure like that. There's, uh, some, we're unpacking all the different ways it's been done in the past to make sure that it's clear. Cause I think it's been a big old problem in the past on how that works. And we want to make sure that that's very clear. We have a cost system that supports our member districts. So, so it depends a little bit.
Yeah. I just had one other comment. First, thank you for the transparency on the magic wand. I think we have to reenact where Dr. Reddman's goals and objectives, not that we don't, he does one too.
I heard that was hypothetical. Otherwise I've cheated, I've been cheated for a long time.
And I'll just say thank you for everything that you've done. I mean, I've been able to see firsthand what, what's been happening at Southwest Metro since you've joined, uh, the organization. And, um, I really appreciate all the work and hard work that has gone into completing the, the listening sessions to the needs assessments to get us to where we are today, to really look at who is Southwest Metro? And where do we need to go as an organization to make sure that all of our students that we serve get what they need to be successful? And that's going to look different for every single program, but I do think that, as we know, that needs are continuing to grow in a lot of those programs. And how do we adapt and how do we, um, how do we become more flexible to allow for those opportunities? I think one of the things that Southwest Metro has really prided itself on over the years is no wait lists for students. If a student has a need that we've been able to bring them in, that we've had the staffing. And staffing is, is began a lot different as well for a lot of those programs that you have to have so many, uh, staff members for a number of students. And it is a much smaller number. Some class sizes for some of the programs are much smaller. So staffing does become a bit of a challenge and we have to look outside, uh, I think outside the box for international teachers, um, who've been brought on board, the grow your own programs, those sorts of things. But anyway, circling back to my, where I was going with my thought, was I just really appreciate everything that you're doing. And, um, I really like the direction of where we're going with Southwest Metro and what we're going to, great things that are going to come on. Going to talk about tomorrow night, I don't know.
Well, thank you for that. It's really been the voice of our community. And because Eagle Model, we've done a great job with it too, is the voice of our community and ground that research does apparently. It was just went out and listened and I know it's been major public, right? Uh, I am happy to announce that next year we will have no wait lists. Uh, we did do that space analysis with a few programs, and that comes with a few bumps. We do that, we know that, but there's a bigger vision. We're trying to work toward this with the students. So we'll be no wait lists and we'll have flexibility to adapt and take people in. Uh, we're going to be voice staff. In fact, uh, we're picking up our very last international teacher. There's a, we're celebrating partnership to help us bring in almost fifty international teachers. And we'll be raising over next year, we'll be the largest employer of international teachers in the state. And because of that, we're again with M B T A and with the community partners we've had, the housing agencies we've had, and all of these we've done. Love her, plenty of butter, and I celebrate them. And Shauk is making, uh, wood fire grilled pizzas for, so we get, I call them the all-star board. So when you get, because first you have to get on this board, then you get to be on the all-star board. Uh, so no one's saying like, oh, but you get wood, wood fired pizza. So that should be fun. So celebration there, but.
Do the alternate board members get to show up just for the wood fired pizza?
Yeah, I, I think they can, and I think, uh, definitely, I honestly, it's open to the public. So if you want to show up and have a slice of pizza, they, you know, like, we, well, they have the other day, but they cook for thirty seconds. Uh, so you show up, you go out at five, five thirty you want, you do a, you did our photo at five thirty, five forty-five, and you get home for whatever on T V S X.
Really?
Chad, Chad, I'm inviting. You were there before, right? I mean, so technically you should probably come.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with them about us. We should be a policy guy.
Right? Well, you, you get to show up twice and cause that's right.
They had canceled that one. So Shauk did like, it was a, for the whole other day, so he made, uh, kind of digital meals. And so sweet balls and potatoes, I think, I wouldn't kind of remember the rest. I think he did like three or four of those things.
Nobody say anything about this, that, you know? Was it fair?
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate you. And thank you for all of your, thank you for the public service. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is item six point three, the attendance engagement specialist Scott County partnership. And I here to present is Madeline Hill, our attendance engagement specialist. And we're going to have to see her as well. Chair Smith, if I could have a moment to introduce our speakers. And just remind the members of the board, it's been eighteen months since we had our joint school board meetings with Scott County. Uh, you know, we talked a lot that evening about collaborations and things that we can work on together. And the attendance engagement specialist position was one of the components that then came from that. Uh, this position is fully funded by Scott County. Uh, they, uh, they are essentially giving us a grant to employ Madeline. She's now been with us through the school year, and is doing a fantastic show. Uh, Madeline does reports directly to Ray, uh, which is why they're here tonight to report on the programming they have in place and the kind of progress of the management to get our, our students, um, into school. Uh, this slide deck is a preview of tomorrow, tomorrow at noon. Uh, this same group will be in front of the Scott County board. They've requested that we, along with other folks that they contract with, come and provide updates. So we'll be updating tomorrow at noon. Uh, and then on Wednesday, I was invited to M D E, uh, to sit on panel to talk about the partnership that we have with Scott County and some of the steps that we're taking to improve student attendance here at Chakatee School. So I will be spending Wednesday at M D E and, and speaking in the afternoon. So I want to thank Madeline and Ray for their work on this, and we'll turn it over to them, uh, for this update. And I can tell you, it's been enjoyable to pull Madeline a few times this year and, and hear about her work and just hear about the good things going on.
Chair Smith, for the forward, uh, just to introduce Madeline, I've been talking a little bit about her as well. But, um, I've had a chance to work with Madeline, uh, earn her time here. It's awesome. I mean, it's a position that was new. And, um, you heard that phrase, they've got to build a plane, line, fine, and things like that, but we were flying and she's doing a great job. Uh, we, uh, one time we had one of our check-ins and she received a call from a parent. And she asked, and she answered the phone, because yes, and, um, could sit and listen to her talk to a parent, you know, about their child. How are they going to get it back in school to trust and that place that she, that she filled with that family and with that esteem. It was awesome. Just a short time, I mean, she's only been here a little bit. And, um, and so she's been really rocking it. Um, and I know it's been appreciated with, uh, with the family that she's worked with. So with that, that would be good.
Yeah, thanks for the intro and good to see you guys again. Good to be back. Um, so yeah, let's jump right into it. So just like Jim said, um, this role is a partnership with Scott County. And the attendance engagement specialist, um, role in trying to work collaboratively with Scott County, so to do the attendance. And, um, I started here July twenty twenty-four and, um, uh, as Jim said, the position is a hundred percent funded by Scott County. Uh, I'm office out of the Family Resource Center. And, um, I have a focus on Chakatee, D C D S, middle school, grade six through eight. Goals here are to improve student attendance, um, continue to enhance practices and procedures around attendance, develop direct connections, um, to help improve, um, the attendance of students, um, and support their families. We're looking to create a positive and measurable impact with students. And we're also. And we're also looking to build a greater understanding across all different district programs and Scott County programs such as path and path prevention. And a little later here in the slide, I'll dive a little deeper into what path prevention is specifically. But that's a quick review of our goals and we share this that can fall too. I'd like to give you guys a snapshot of what my day-to-day looks like. My main job here is I'm managing a caseload of specific students who are considered chronically tront. I get my caseload by attending the East and West attendance meetings. And once I have a student add to my caseload, I hold an attendance meeting with members from Scott County, the school and the family. So an example of a Scott County member that has been to several of my attendance meetings is a student's youth, youth mental health caseworker. That's a worker that's super involved with the family and the student. So it's very important that they're there. Other members from the school that are invited to the meetings are going to be admin representatives, school counselors, social workers, cultural liaisons, whoever regularly are part of this student's education, they're invited to this meeting. And then also the student always invited. And then the family, the legal guardian is always there too. Throughout the year, I've had attendance meetings at people's homes. And that's just what works better for their schedule and transportation. I actually have a family who I was going to their home on a five month lead basis, Thursday at one P M of meeting at their house. We also have had attendance meetings at the school and at the Family Resource Center for meetings that are little over a year and a day. So in addition to attendance meetings, I'm also checking in, checking in with my students on a regular basis to see how they're doing, make sure they have what they need to build relationships and to also review their attendance progress. This year, I've also worked with the middle school building admin team to define career processes and communication channels in regards to attendance for the whole building. I've been working on developing data collection systems to accurately measure my students' attendance progress. And then another item that I worked on this year with the communications department here at the D O is proactive messaging to students and families across the whole district. And the next slide here shows that proactive messaging that we send out. This flyer is sent out to all families in the district again as a proactive measure. And this document here, it explains why attendance is important. It explains how shop can track attendance. It lays out what is considered a verified and unverified excuse. So in other words, I assume other students are absent. It lays out how a parent can make an account on every campus, the program that the students have, but because their attendance, their class schedule, grades, and all that. So it shows them how to make an account on there so they can track their student's attendance. And then it also demonstrates, it also informs families on how they can call in about an absence, that their student's going to be gone. So again, there's a proactive measure trying to, you know, address attendance with what becomes, you know, a recurring issue. The next chart here, this chart shows a snapshot of the insurancy rates compared to last school year and this school year, grade six through eight. So the first, the first column, that shows the percentage of students who are attending school on a regular basis here at East and West Middle School. The middle column shows the percentage of students that are absent from school from thirty to seventy percent of the time, which is equivalent to a student missing fifty to, to a hundred and nineteen days by the end of the school year. And then the last column represents the number of students who are missing more than seventy percent of the year, which would be equivalent to missing more than a hundred and nineteen days in a year by the end of the school year. The population of students that I'm looking with is highlighted in the green column. So shop's attendance expectation is that students are missing no more than ten percent of the year. So if there are attendance concerns with any student in that first column, they're going to receive tier one attendance interventions from staff members like the school counselor, cultural liaison, school social worker. So anybody who's been absent eleven percent to twenty-nine percent of the time, that's who's going to be supporting most students. Anyone missing thirty to seventy percent of the time is going to receive tier two intervention, which is provided by me. And last year, there was about thirty-one students in this range. This year, there's twenty-six. And then any student in the middle schools who's missing more than seventy percent of the year, or again, more than a hundred and nineteen days by the end of the year, they're going to receive tier three attendance intervention support through the county's programs, which is path prevention. And path prevention is composed of two local agencies that support students and families who actually are chronically absent. They have the catalog so group, that's who we work with first. If attendance improves in the catalog so group, then that's awesome. Then we'll keep doing what they're doing. If the attendance does not improve with them, or if it continues to be a concern, we'll work at Treehouse. If the attendance increases, improves, we'll keep doing what they're doing. If it doesn't improve, then ultimately, if insurance is finally going to be reported. So, so again, this chart, it shows you the percentage of students in the different absenteeism ranges. And then I just explained by who's supporting these students in different sections. So every student that is absent more than thirty percent of the year has some sort of intervention in place at shop at East and West Middle School. I just think that's a super powerful statement and it's very important to share. And it just goes to show how hard shop in public schools, specifically the middle schools, is working to address attendance and make sure that no kid is falling under the radar and not getting their due due. So I just think that's really powerful and important to share. So this slide right here, this represents the demographic breakdown of the students that I've worked with this year. When I made this slide, I had worked with twenty-two students, but I just got two added to my caseload today. So I'm at twenty-four, but this is based on the twenty-two until then. So as when it comes to race and ethnicity, the three largest populations that I've worked with so far this year have been students that are white, students that are Hispanic, and students that are black. Twelve out of the twenty-two students have identified as female, ten have identified as male. And then when it comes to the different grades, eighth grade has been the grade where I have the most students that are chronically absent. And then it kind of goes down from there. So it seems like the higher grade, more students, but attendance concerns are the things that eat the middle schools. But this slide right here shows a visual of the partnership between the middle schools and Scott County's insurancy process. So again, we're working at East and West, grade six through eight. And then at the, at the middle school, we're holding attendance meetings. We're, we're literally looking at every student to see how much gold they missed and where their absenteeism rate is. And any students who are missing more than like ten percent of the year, they're getting assigned to somebody. And again, the school counselor, the social worker, cultural liaison, equity specialist, they're getting students from that eleven percent to twenty-nine percent. And I'm getting the students that are absent thirty to seventy percent. Once I get a student adds my caseload, I'm going to hold an attendance meeting, an in-person one, where I'm like family, student, and any other relevant team members. After that first meeting, we will schedule a second in-person follow-up meeting to review the success of the plan that we create in the first meeting. And I forgot to mention the point of our first meeting is to identify the student's attendance barriers and create a plan to remove those barriers. So at the second meeting, we review the progress towards their attendance. If the original plan that we made is unsuccessful, we're going to make some adjustments. And we're going to continue to on a regular basis until attendance improves, until we come up with a plan that sticks and works for the students. If the original plan that we made in that first meeting is successful, we will schedule another follow-up meeting on a timeline that's determined by the team at the meeting. And I'll continue to monitor the student's attendance, make sure that plan is consistently working as the year goes on. Ultimately, if a student that I work with, if their attendance does not improve, it continues to be a concern, I will refer it to the path prevention program and then the family will work with that. So that's how, that's how my position at work between the middle schools and Scott County, that's the bridge there. And then out of the, the twenty-two students that I've worked with this year, nine students have improved their attendance at East and West Middle School. And attendance, improved attendance is determined by if the student has made significant progress or if they've met their attendance goal. So that's that original meeting where we're identifying attendance barriers and creating a plan, but also making a goal for that student to reach. So if they reach that goal, if they're making progress, we're continuing that improved attendance. And I should say also, like when they do, once they do reach their goal, we may get another one. So it's always something that we're working towards, you know? And then four students have been set up with an alternative school setting such as homeschooling, online school. And then I have one student returned back to their home district. I have five students where I'm still developing the plan, they're seeing it through. So I have like two families in there where I'm still trying to get the initial meeting scheduled. There's another family or another student where we're still needing to figure out a plan that works. And then there's a couple of students who not enough time has passed for me to determine if, if they're making enough progress or they've met their attendance goal yet. That's where those five students land. Four of the students I've worked with this year, I've referred to path. And then ultimately, two of those did end up in insurancy finally after path prevention efforts were exhausted. And then this slide right here, this slide lists the factors that I personally observed that contributed to a student's absenteeism. And I would say the most, really most common that I come across in a lot of my phone calls, my texts, my emails, my meetings with families, is going to be top one for sure. So I just feel sort of still operating under COVID strong messaging about if you, if you feel a little sick, to stay home. So I just, some families that are still operating, operating under that messaging. And definitely mental health concerns of the student and/or the family that's not being properly addressed is definitely a major attendance barrier that we are frequently having conversation problems. And then also, if a student is struggling academically, socially, or behaviorally, if they're struggling in one of those areas or all three or two of those areas, there seems to be last nomination to get to school. So that's another barrier too. I would say those three are the most common, but these are all relevant for sure. To address the attendance barriers that we have come across this year, the middle schools offer a variety of supports. And again, I'm going to share the three most common that we've implemented. So the first one, changing a student's class schedule or giving them an alternative spot to eat lunch has helped. So, you know, adding like a study hall as an elective for a student who is doing a little behind in their homework has been helpful. A student who I, we've changed with the school counselors, we've changed the student's class schedule so that they're with more of their friends so that, because they're really motivated socially to get to school. So those are just a couple of quick examples there. And then connect therapy. And then a huge, huge support in the schools to help students to have mental health concerns. And that, and that removes barriers for the family of like trying to, trying to get them set up with some sort of outside program, trying to figure out a way to get them there. It's super helpful to address mental health and it's really helpful for the families too. So that's something I've really utilized, it's been super helpful. And then also, when a student is absent for a period of time, as you can imagine, the missing work starts to pile up. And that on top of whatever barriers were already at play, like increases anxiety and worries about coming back to school. So teachers have been super awesome about making, helping me make homework makeup plans for students so that we can take their missing assignment homework list from this and cutting it down to this so that it's more manageable and hopefully, you know, increases that motivation to come back to school. In addition to supports that are provided in the school, we've also utilized resources within the county. So something that I bring to all of my meetings is that there's this card that's on this slide. There's a Q R code and there's a list of different areas. So like if a family is struggling financially, if there's mental health concerns, if there's food insecurity, they can click those different topics and it will jump down to the page that lists different resources in the area that, you know, can pop out with the area that they're struggling in. So it can give you different places for like food shelves or different, you know, places where you can just do like therapy and whatnot. So it's a, it's like a resource guide, it's super helpful. I bring it to all my meetings and I shouldn't have taken a picture, but I also have one of these Spanish too, which is really convenient too. Because I have a couple of Spanish speaking families. Two resources that I've had families utilize right from that community connections guide is the M D T A Connect Ride Share, which provides discounted rides for people in the county. So I can't remember how much the rides are offhand, but they are discounted and they are way cheaper than Uber or Lyft. So I have a family who, they have a car now, which is awesome, but they didn't earlier in the year. They're utilizing that because Uber's in Lyft, which is expensive. So that's a super helpful resource. And then I also had, also had a family earlier in the year who were struggling with their child's mental health. Not sure who to turn to, didn't have anybody in their community that they could relate to. So, you know, they signed up for this parent support group. They went to a handful of sessions where they were able to connect with other parents who, whose child had similar mental health pieces going on. The intent, the goal and the intention is that they learn from each other, provide support, and just, you know, create a community so they don't feel alone. They ultimately help the child. And then last slide here describes how we see, what, what we want to happen with this position moving into the summer and next year. So in the spring here, I'm looking to connect with the attendance teams at the elementary level, learn about incoming sixth graders who have previous attendance concerns in elementary school. Meet with them towards the end of the school year so I can, you know, have a staff member introduce me to them and their family. have a staff member introduce me to them and their family and then work with them throughout the summer to start to prepare for that transition to middle school and starting to build like healthy habits to help with attendance. Also, I'm going to help out with summer school this year in regards to attendance, make sure any student that I was working with this year that signs up for summer school, which I have a couple of them strongly, strongly encourage them to sign up, making sure that they're getting there and anyone else who has attendance concerns for summer school, I'll be supporting there. And then we're hoping to have you connect with other school districts in the area who are working to improve student's attendance so that, you know, again, we just can learn from each other, see what's working in another district, I can share what I learned, they can share what they learned. So looking to connect with other districts that way. And then, yeah, last slide here, thanks for questions, thanks for listening. I hope we don't go too quick or anything or too long. Any questions here?
Thank you very much. It's just, it's great to have you in the district and see the great things you're already doing. I'm kind of curious how, how does, how does a student first come to your attention? You know, you see you've got 22 now, 24. Do you see like the records from their attendance last year, so they're already on your radar? Or are they referred to you directly? Or do you wait until they have like 10 apps a day out of 30 and they suddenly pop up right through the database? I'm just kind of curious how they...
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, so I think they came up here, I got students on my caseload by, by reviewing attendance from last year to see like if they've had attendance concerns in the past at the middle schools. And then as the year goes on, like again, at the attendance meetings, like we're tracking students' attendance as a percentage. So once any student has hit that, has hit that 30% mark, that they, they got to 30% of time, no matter if we're two months into the school year, or if we were four months in, or at this point, they're out of my caseload. And then throughout the year, like I had like nine students who their attendance has improved. They've kind of been like taken off my caseload, but they're still on my radar. They're still checking in every week to make sure that they're, they're still attending school on a regular basis. I check in with them, but not as often as like one week, because the students were like efficient on my caseload at that moment.
Madam, thank you. It sounds like you're doing a lot of good work here. Clearly, your job is like to work your way out of a job, it sounds like. To some degree, hopefully that is a problem. I imagine communication's a challenge in working with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. You have to go through the parents for the most part at that level. Is that a problem with some of the kids you're working with, if their parents aren't as cooperative as you'd like to have them be? Or is it not that a challenge?
Um, you know, yeah, there's a couple times where, you know, there's, yeah, there's times where it takes me, it only takes me one phone call to get ahold of a parent. Sometimes it takes me three phone calls, two emails, five texts before I can hold them. There's been a couple times where I literally had to go to their house to get them to respond to me. So it, it has, I've solved it.
How did it end up six, seven, and eighth grade? Is there the ability to go to the high school too? Or is it just that's kind of the source of when this becomes a big problem for students?
So we're looking at sixth and sixth through eighth grade right now to address attendance concerns in that population so that we can change those habits before we go to high school so that these students who, you know, attendance plays a crucial role to graduation. So we are trying to work with these students to increase their attendance in high school. There's not attendance concerns and there's not a risk of them not graduating. Though we have had conversations about how my position could help or could work with the high school. And I know for sure like students that are in eighth grade right now, like we've had conversations about maybe continue to support them in the ninth grade of that transition. I actually have, I was super sweet girl on my caseload, all my students are wonderful, but she asked me, she's like, she's in eighth grade and she's like, so are you going to, you have the high school with me next year? And I was like, I will make sure that I am. Like, I don't even worry, like I got you, like I'm there. So, yeah.
Couple of questions, maybe this is more related for Jim and like maybe Ray. I know this is a joint partnership with the county. Has the county provided, and maybe this will be tomorrow, I can be, but has the county provided any feedback on the work that we're doing and how it might be impacting their work as a result of the positive things that are going on in this position?
I think at this point, Ray and Madam, with Madam being based out of the Family Resource Center, she sees county staff on a regular basis, Nikki Halberg in particular, who Ray has become a part of the county. We will be getting more formal feedback tomorrow. I don't know, Ray, have you heard anything through Nikki Halberg or has she come?
Yes, in our discussion that we have with Nikki, first of all, it's not, it's all the county, that's all in that relationship. And when this was prior meetings up there, true workers were working there, and what they were doing, kids from Scott County, just the numbers, yeah, that's numbers that are talking about, big. And the caseloads that they have are so huge, you know, having the people to do some of the things that we're doing. And that's why we really narrow it down to the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, right? But I think she's, she's doing a wonderful job. The people that I've talked to in the county, they've really talked about it, it's hard. I mean, just because there's so many numbers, they can't reach every single kid that they have on the caseload, you know? So there's caseloads that are too big for so many people in the county right now. So they're trying to work on how can they find more. And I think Jim talked to you about meetings that go meet Department of Education about this as well, because this job is so important and I'm starting to see those take out some stuff inside of everyone's work.
Because I mean, this is a grant that the county has received, so grants typically last forever. So that's why I'm wondering what, what the impact has been counting there. I mean, we're seeing, you know, great results as a result of having this position, but since this is the county funded position, I'm just worried with the grant, what, I don't know where the grant is coming from, but the source, but what impact that might have on the somebody uncertainty that we have with grant dollars and...
I understand because the original contract was for two years. I don't, I don't know beyond that, and I don't know, you know, if there's any risk to the funding source. I think what this does for the county, and I think that Madam spoke to us as well, you know, we're trying to find the best resource to reach students. There are students who are referred to social workers, students who are referred to truancy, this is essentially a, it's not a sign that we have for students that are willing to get, get back to school because of the barriers of the case or something. And to basically find trust that they can go back to this, back to school, that the kid can be. You know, when you look at the caseloads, we really do view this as being like county social worker or the truancy officer, they typically run caseloads, probably fifteen plus or minus a couple. So that's been the goal from the outset, and Madam has covered her own, that's what she got.
I applaud you for all the work that you've been doing. I think you hit it right on the head, it's all about relationships. And if these students haven't been able to make that connection, establish relationships in their school experience so far, but they've been able to, like the example you gave the girl going to the high school and wanting to be there, those are all important factors that get kids to school. It's, it's that relationship building and it's not necessarily with their peers or staff. And so I, I really appreciate you and all the work that you've been doing to get our kids at school and establishing those relationships because for some kids, that might be really adult relationship that they might have. So thank you. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's our agenda item, 6.4, fiscal year 26 proposed budget, presenting as the Minasia Department of Finance. Welcome.
Thank you. Just going to grab this laptop. Yes, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the fiscal 26 budget for review and discussion this evening. What you have on your screen and on the TV screens here are 11 slides going over next year's budgets. My goal, because this is a school board discussion item, is to get through those 11 slides in about 10 minutes here and then turn it back to you in terms of discussion or questions you may have for that. Before we dive into the details, thank you for recognizing our finance team at the beginning of the meeting for the Asyls or Good Exponents and Financial Reporting and our credit rating upgrade. That means a lot to a group that is largely behind the scenes, so thank you for doing that. Agenda items for tonight, much of this process is governed by statute, and so we'll talk about our annual budget requirements and the commitment to our community in terms of our fiscal transparency and our process. We'll then go into our fiscal 26 general fund budget assumptions that are used to drive our revenue and expenditure projections. Next, we'll talk about our guiding budget principles that we utilize every time we develop budgets. We will then look at the next two bullet points, which are the meat and potatoes, our general fund revenue and expenditure summary, and our general fund fund balance projection for next year. We'll then talk about a timeline to a June 2025 recommendation for school board approval on next year's budget, and then a time for questions or other discussion items that you should have. First, starting with budget requirements, I mentioned that much of our process is governed by statute, and if it's statute 123B/77, it requires the school board to approve the annual budget prior to the start of the school year, or the fiscal year on July 1st. So I will use the term 2025-26 or fiscal 26, and I would mention Dr. Redd, well, I know Dr. Redd, and I'll do that, as we've met several times on the topic. He will use those terms as well, so just if we're talking back and forth between those, know that we're talking about the same year and it's next year from July through June. Our budget process, our budget process in SHOCV schools is a continuous four-step process, and it's important to note that each step is important, and it's important enough that it requires school board approval and is open to public inspection and comment. If any client in the community wants to come in and inspect our documents or make comments on our process, we would welcome those comments or questions. Our process starts with our property tax levy and truth and taxation meeting. You approved the truth and taxation meeting last December, December of 2024, which set the tax levy for calendar 2025 and fiscal year 2026. So right now, we know our projected tax levy revenue for next year, fiscal year 2026. Step two is what we're going through right now, our preliminary, also known as our adopted budget for next year. We will get approximately a little bit more than halfway through the fiscal year, and then we will, we have typically brought a revised budget to you in January, February, with things that are just not known during the preliminary budget process, things like contract settlements that may remain open, legislative summaries that we may not know as part of the preliminary budget planning process. And then finally, we'll close our books and have our annual financial report and fiscal audit. Typically, that's reported to the school board for approval in November after the end of the closing of fiscal year. Our guiding budget principles, first, we lead with fiscal transparency. We strive to provide transparency and clarity and frankly consistency in our budget process and everything that we do financially. And then our main guiding principle from a policy standpoint is fund balance policy 714. We talked about that quite a bit. Strive to maintain an unassigned fund balance in the general fund between eight and 12%. You'll recall that we have really targeted that 10% to the mid-range of our fund balance policy. Next year, our, our budgeted expenditures that you will see in the general fund are 132.2 million. So obviously, easy math, 10% fund balance in the mid-range of the policy is 13.2 million. And as you'll see in, in the upcoming slides here, when we look at our revenue expenditure summary and fund balance impact, we do project to be able to remain at 10% at the end of fiscal 26, so at June 30, 2026. In order to do that, we do, we are going to recommend a significant utilization of our restricted fund balances and some of our assigned fund balances remain at that number. If that didn't make sense, I'll unpack that further when we get to the fund balance. Really, school district budgets are nothing more than developing assumptions and then putting those into practice. And so major budget assumptions are shown here on this page, and they're an integral part of adopting a budget, of adopting a budget. We develop assumptions on the right-hand side there in student enrollment, expenditures, and revenue. And you can see our major assumption category. As we all know, we're in a period of natural decline in student enrollment, and that's reflected in our enrollment assumptions for next year. We're projecting an enrollment projection, this is students, so not pupil units. Right now, we're talking about students or average daily membership of 7,457 students, a decrease in enrollment of 82 students from this year's revised budget projection. So we did this year's revised budget, now looking at next year, we project to be down to 82 students year over year. And that's early childhood through grade 12. Expenditure assumptions, so obviously, school districts are people-intensive organizations. It's important to develop some assumptions around salary, wages, and employee benefits, and that's what you see here. We have put estimates for contractual obligations that expire at the end of this year, so we know that the SHOCV Education Association contract expires at the end of this year, as does our paraprofessional contract. And we've developed assumptions for what we expect in terms of contractual obligations for next year for those contracts that expire. There are also contracts that are settled through June of 2026, so we know what those actual expenditures are, and we've added those to the budget as well. We've added 3% for non-wage and benefit items, things like supplies and materials, utilities, things of that nature, purchase services, things like that. And then we do have a different increase for district transportation, provided through home or bus service. And we've talked previously about our property insurance increase has, has been a little bit more significant this year, not a little bit, a lot more significant. And so we've added that increase in the budget for next year as well. And then lastly, under our revenue assumptions, looking at the 2021 motor approved operating levy. So recall, in 2021, when question one and two were approved, that was 1,266 per pupil unit. That number is tied to inflation, and so here we are in calendar year 2025. That amount has increased to $1,371.84 per pupil. And also state aid, so state aid is indexed to inflation now, the formula increase that the state has sent us is 2.74%. So that state formula increase next year would be said $7,481 per pupil. It is important to note about, like I read that although our operating levy is tied to inflation and has increased from 1,266 up to 1372 rounded, and the state formula increase is indexed to inflation as well, it's, both of those revenue categories are paid based out of your enrollment projection. And so those inflationary increases are mitigated by our revenue for our enrollment decrease as well. Where does the money go? So looking at a pie chart of our general fund, it's important to note that more than 65% of our general fund budget is spent on elementary and secondary regular instruction and special education instruction, so the two large areas, the pie graph highlighted there. It's even more so if you add our vocational education instruction, and then that 10% that we spend on instructional support services, much of that is classroom expenditures as well, things like media center, counseling and guidance support, things of that nature. Much of our pupil support services, that 9% is our district transportation, our contract with home or bus is in that category. That's not the entirety of it, but it's a large percentage of that. Sites and buildings, that's our custodial services as well as our operating capital and long-term facility maintenance projects. Fiscal and other, that's largely our property insurance, and then obviously administration and district support services as well. Now getting to the meat and potatoes, the next two slides, our adopted budget revenue and expenditure summer. As you can see, we're, we're looking at a period here where we're going to be heading into some budget headwinds. I'm sure everybody's heard about area school districts that are experiencing some of the same. We're not immune to that, and so you're going to see some of that in the next two slides. So reading from top to bottom and left to right, you'll see under the general fund revenue, the way this reads is last year's actual general fund revenue. So you can see last year was collected in revenue 100, just over 129 million. This year's revised budget is 126.2 million, and then next year's budget, highlighted in gray, is 125 and a half million. So obviously... So obviously, when you're looking at a 24-month period with over $3 million less in general fund revenue, that provides some pretty significant budget challenges. And much of that is derived from the federal grants role where you see that that's decreased. A lot of that is the expiration of our pandemic-related revenue. But much of that is from nominal increases from the state and also related to our student enrollment coin as well. And then looking down below at the expenditures, you can see that last year we spent 120.4 million in expenditures. This year, we're budgeted to spend just shy of 127 million and next year, that increase is just under 4%, up to 132 million, based off of those assumptions that I talked about previously. So going to the next page, the real measure of our financial health is that unassigned fund balance. And as I mentioned, we are projecting in the preliminary budget to remain at 10% as of June 30, 2026, which would be 13.14 million. In order to do that, well, first going down the page, there are non-spendable fund balance, that's things like inventory and prepaid, so we don't predict a change there that's just based off of the balance and inventory and prepaid at the end of the year. Long-term facility maintenance, that's a lot of our deferred maintenance, health and safety and disabled accessibility projects. Operating capital, so we've talked about our school district curriculum adoption and we've had a planned spend out in that operating capital fund balance and that's shown here, going from just north of 3 million at the end of this year to 1.2 million next year. That's a planned spend out related to the curriculum adoption expenditures. Our capital projects, technology levies, projected to remain flat. And then, as I mentioned at the beginning, the next two rows, in order to remain at 10%, we are recommending to utilize a significant portion of our restricted fund balance and also our assigned fund balance. So assigned for district programming is a fund balance that we've built up in previous years in order to utilize that for a projected budget need in a subsequent year. And that's what you see, we're doing exactly that next year. And our restricted fund balance is primarily derived from a fund balance that we've developed in compensatory and also in learning and development and we're recommending spending those fund balances down as well. The good news is we have that available. The other news is that that's a one-time revenue source, so it's one-time fund balance that we can use one time and we're looking at utilizing that in fiscal 26 in order to keep that fund balance at 10%. And then lastly, with regard to the timeline, we really started this process back in February with the Finance and Facilities Committee. We had another meeting in March with that committee and then again tonight, the committee was generous to add another meeting to talk about all of our projection information. We're talking about fiscal 26 at the school board meeting tonight. We'll continue the conversation at the next meeting in April before we bring in a review of all funds, which would include obviously our food service community, debt service and our non-major funds at the meeting in May. We'll address any budget questions at our June 9 meeting before finally recommending the fiscal 26 budget for approval on June 23 to the end of clients' winter extension. Well, that was not 10, that was 14 minutes, but that is all that I have in terms of next year's budget. I realize that's a ton of information in a short period of time. This is going to be an agenda item here moving forward at a future meeting or at future meetings, so if you have any immediate questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Just one follow-up question. Though you had mentioned like it was the operating capital line and having to do more so with the curriculum, in effect, that's a one-time expense, right, associated with that purchase? So that's not necessarily a continuing expense in the future years, is that a fair statement?
That is fair, yeah. So we do have curriculum.
I mean, there's an expense.
Yeah, yes, but not a significant spend down in a future year. There have been years where we actually build that operating capital fund balance, but when our curriculum purchases are much less than our revenue that we collect, it's typical for that fund balance to go up and down based off of those curriculum purchases.
And I was just going to draw a correlation to it, yeah, it's a one-time, one-time money, right? But it's also against a one-time investment as opposed to providing educational services over time, that's a continuous, like, trajectory and one-time money is just that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Stolen a question.
That was a question I had. Your mic's taken.
Bill, thank you. We addressed this in the meeting earlier and I missed it, I apologize, but for clarity's sakes, on one of the adopted budget revenue expenditure summary page, the other local revenue in this 2324 was 6.5 and it's 2.3, what is that?
Yeah, good question and we didn't address it and I probably should have, so thank you for asking. Much of that is, has to do with CFC, Central Family Center land sale last year, so the decrease is significant, so not all of that has to do with it, but a large chunk, I think about a million and a half, has to do with the CFC land sale. So that's where that landed. To tie both points together, the CFC land sale revenue was in operating capital revenue but also categorized in other local revenue. So that's money to the waters too much, but that's part of the decrease. Some of that is a conservative interest revenue estimate this year, so you recall we had significant interest revenue last year and it's recorded under the other local revenues. This year, I backed off of that estimate a little bit, not a little bit, significantly. And I think we're coming in a little bit better than projection on interest revenue this year than that budget. And then we had some technology, I looked at this, we had some technology sales, miscellaneous technology sales through Brian Grohl's, our tech director, that's where that revenue came in last year and it's the more significant that I've budgeted for this year. And when you add up those three main areas, that's the main cause of the decrease.
So we're going to land this out.
One little account.
I have one more question. For the state aid and the revenue, it looks like we've got an increase there from what we had in 2324 of 91 million to 93, sorry, I got the glasses, I'm trying to correct the logo over here, 93.735, 871, so that's about a two and a half ninety-dollar increase. Is that the inflation of 2.74% or where is that increase in funding coming from?
Yeah, so the increase from this year's budget, I'm circling it on the screen here, the 93.372 million, that's about 400,000 that I'm budgeting for next year to 93.7 million.
Got it.
So that is the 2.74% mitigated by the enrollment loss. There are other factors there, special ed cross-subsidy revenue is in this area as well, but the main cause of the increase is the 2.74%.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Next on agenda, slide 625, financial planning model, and Bill will remain to present along with Dr. Reddick.
Yeah, this is Chair Smith and board members. We're going to, Bill, kind of, to help you bring it up, you talked primarily about next school year's budget, fiscal 26. We're going to extend out another year and then a little bit even beyond that and, you know, what typically Bill would refer to as, you know, long-range financial planning model, FPM, which is why it has that title. If we go to the next slide, this is all, not tonight, but over the next, you know, weeks, couple of months, there is ultimately some pretty important decisions in terms of our, you know, plotting on, planning our financial future in our school district. And so what we're going to do to see, I mean, is really lay out what is as best we can kind of the context of the situation. It's tricky over there. And so what I was just alluding to is, you know, we've got, we have some financial challenges in fiscal 27 and then also, you know, when you're working on that, you have to take a look then at fiscal 28 and beyond as well and kind of initiating that. And I think I used the word context already, but this really important word here is what we're trying to do is share what is as best we can, looking for feedback, looking for questions. Got some real good ones at our Finance and Facilities Committee meeting this evening, but trying to give you our best sense of where our district stands and how things will likely play out next year and the year that follows that and then even a little bit beyond. This is, you know, Bill alluded to this too. There are very, I don't know of any school districts in the state of Minnesota that aren't facing some form of financial challenge as we kind of, we're in the midst of this current legislative year, but looking to plan, you know, kind of budgets in the future. This data is self-reported data, it comes from other school districts through the Association Metro School Districts and yes, the middle column there will have more numbers, they haven't been reported yet, but just to give a sense, these are, you know, there's a statewide challenge, we've seen the news stories and then there's, you know, for us, kind of that local context matters too, but these are the districts that we often compare ourselves to, the other 11. Some of them made pretty significant budget cuts for this school year and have already set to work on making significant budget cuts for next school year. We've made adjustments in the form of, you know, decreasing enrollment, but we have not made formal budget cuts, so whether that's a zero or whether that's, you know, that number should be a little bit different in those columns, still a lot less than those other numbers. This is kind of, I don't know, we're going to an event, this is a spreadsheet and actually we possess a couple more if anybody over there wants some. This is to help anchor, it's kind of an anchor spreadsheet, if you will. All the work that Bill does, he can tie back in and out of the budget that he just showed you for fiscal 26. This is not that type of a spreadsheet. This is really meant to give feedback that people who look at school finance can follow. And so we've broken it down by the four pieces where people tend to have interest or ask questions and everything doesn't necessarily tie back and forth in this particular spreadsheet, but it's an attempt to give trend data to help explain the context of where we're situated financially. And so if you look at the, you know, the top section on the page, it talks about revenues, then it shifts to student enrollment and then the third section is about employment of teachers and then we get into the expenditures by MDE, by codes. And so as we talk about some of the pieces of this, we'll even refer back to the rows, this will be rows 11 and 16 on that, you know, anchor spreadsheet, if you will, but it talks about the impact of decreasing enrollment and feel the data is very good for this fiscal 21 through fiscal 26. And as we look at this, you know, there's a cost. When you have fewer students, that impacts your state education aid and you can see, you know, the amounts for fiscal 22, fiscal 23, fiscal 24, current school year, fiscal 25. We feel that we have a very accurate projection of student enrollment for fiscal 26. And then one of the questions that was asked at the Finance Committee, it's a great question, fiscal 27 and fiscal 28, those numbers are still, they've been adjusted, but they haven't been further adjusted. And so we are trying to figure out, we're between two major trends and it's not the purpose of this evening. One is, we're still seeing declines in kindergarten enrollment. You know, right now, it's at about 424 students, we think it's close to bottoming out, but even though it's been going down, we're seeing some different trends. You know, you would expect that 424 to kind of matriculate through. Traditionally, when it did that, we really only saw a jump in students, you know, sometimes sixth grade into seventh grade and then a significant growth, you know, eighth grade into ninth grade. What we're seeing now are multiple grades adding students that were not ever kindergartners or sometimes, you know, didn't even come to the primary grade, so we're trying to track that, figure out if that's a temporary change or a more permanent change. And so right now, the numbers in fiscal 27 and 28 are very conservative, but it's still, the point of this is to, I don't think people fully understand the impact of declining enrollment in terms of state aid and revenue. Makes sense on the surface, fewer kids, less money, but some things, you know, you still need a finance department to do the accounting. You still need lots of things that, whether you have 7,000 kids or 8,000 kids or 9,000 kids, you kind of have the same level of need. Other things we adjust, you know, based on enrollment. This piece was, you know, people cut up, how do you spend your money? And so if you look at the expenditures, you know, the primary places where we spend our resources, regular instruction and whether you look at it, you know, the actuals fiscal 21 through 25 or projected through fiscal 28. If we do the projection fiscal 21 through 28, we expect our expenditures on regular instruction to total 15.2 million dollars. An interesting side note, because of the decline in enrollment, we actually have fewer teachers this school year than we had in the 2021 school year. We expect to have fewer yet in the 27, 28 school year. So even though our number of teachers in that regular instruction category are fewer, that expenditure, you know, is increasing by a little bit over 5% per year. Special ed instruction, similar to that, we do not have a decrease in teachers there, but we do have an increase of a little over $10 million. We did receive special education state aid over the same period. We expect that to be 9.2 million. So for a little bit, that aid was covered, those additional increased costs. And by the time we get to the 27, 28 school year, the expenditures are projected to be greater than that additional aid that has come our way recently. And then another category, pupil support, transportation, part of, you know, coming out of the operating levy in November of '21, we shortened the walking distances, also just the cost of transporting students, fuel and those type of things has increased, so that's an expenditure there. And if you go back to, we go to the next slide, but the bottom of your anchor spreadsheet, you know, if you look at the expenditures and these are, you know, what we would call the general, kind of general fund expenditures and the things that people track through that, not all of the expenditures in our district, but when you look at these pieces there, you'll notice that the three that were just on the previous slide total roughly $30 million. All of those, you know, all of those categories total about, you know, $35 million in terms of an increase from fiscal 21 to fiscal 28. And then just, you know, again, you've got the revenues pulled out there to track and that's just to try to give our board members and our community this information in a usable framework. And then if we go to the next slide, we're going to shift away from enrollment and expenditures and just focus a little bit on another part of our financial reality, which not only our individual financial reality, our families, but, you know, a school district trying to operate and provide services. We're not immune from inflation, but the table format, it is the most, I'll lose my voice in the middle of this meeting, I've never done that at a board meeting before. It used to happen quite often, coaching basketball. I maybe yelled at anybody today, Joe, so. You just happened to be there, so I'm looking at the table. But you'll see that, you know, kind of starting in April of 2020, or sorry, 2021, inflation increased and we've got the monthly rates there and I think that just provides a little more source data or substance to the next slide, which we see quite often. You'll notice for quite an extended period of time, this graph shows, the orange dotted line is the actual amount of general education aid or per pupil aid that we receive, you know, our school district receives in the state or in all school districts. The per pupil is the orange dotted line, the solid blue line. The solid blue line is what that would be if it were adjusted over time for inflation. And you'll notice the gap between those two things is pretty constant as you come up on the year 2021. And that gap in, in the year 2021, the difference between the orange line and the blue line, the, the line that we received and had that same revenue then adjusted for inflation, was a difference of $569 per pupil. And then as, you'll notice as you move from 2021 to 2025, that gap widens tremendously because inflation was very high during that time period. And so that gap in what a, a school district is receiving in general education formula grew from $569 per pupil to $1,364 per pupil, a difference or an increase in the gap of $795 per pupil. And I think the next natural question then goes, well, what does that mean for shock of being? Well, that gap, that difference that grew between '21 and '25, fiscal '21 and fiscal '25, amounts to $6 million, $6.6 million in revenue that had our per pupil funding kept pace with the rate of inflation over that, that time period, we would, we would be receiving $6.6 million in additional state aid if it had kept pace with the rate of inflation. And again, sharing that to give a sense of the, the very real impact of inflation on our school district and to be quite frank, on nearly every or possibly every school district across the state of Minnesota. And then I'm going to shift back, give my voice a break. We're going to get into the more detailed analysis and accounting, which is Bill's area, which is kind of to take some of this and then bring it back into a model similar to what he used for the preliminary budget for '26, but he's going to show the out years too.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, and so Mike's exactly right. If you understand, or if you have familiarity with the revenue expenditure summary on the fiscal '26 budget, this is the exact same format that's shown with fiscal '27 and '28. With one very important item to note, what you see in fiscal '27 and '28 assumes that we would not do anything in what's known as the help years. And by anything, it assumes that we would not make budget reductions. It assumes that we would not seek additional sources of revenue. That's the best way to show an apples-to-apples comparison with fiscal '25, '26, '27, and '28. Obviously, I, I wouldn't think that we would move forward of fiscal '28 with the deficit projection that you see there and not address that somehow, but the best way to show that is apples-to-apples. So that assumes that we would not do anything. So you see, you can see on the revenue row, our total general fund revenues, I previously mentioned, next year is projected at 125.5 million. The year after that, fiscal '26, '27, our general fund revenue would, we project increase by 300,000. So you can do the math on that. 300,000 as a percentage of 125 million is a very, very, very small increase. And then the year after that, we're projecting another increase of above 400,000, again, in terms of 126.2 million, a very, very small increase. So, and then you go down to our expenditures. Important to note that the assumption that I talked about for fiscal '26, I just simply carried those forward for fiscal '27 and '28 in terms of expected contractual obligations, 3% increases on supplies and materials, and then just assumed increases for things like transportation and property insurance. So you can see based off of that, I project our fiscal '27 budget to increase from 132 million in fiscal '26 up to 135 million in '27, and then up to 140.9 million in '28. And really, the fiscal '27 number is partially offset if you look at capital and equipment. We talked about curriculum adoption. So our curriculum adoption expenditures are significant next year at fiscal '26. That decrease of seven, from 9.6 million to 7.6 million is partially offsetting that $3 million increase we see at the bottom. All right? So just an important item to note as we look at the out years projection. I'll quickly go through, I talked about this previously, we talked about the fiscal '26 budget in order to remain at 10%, utilizing a significant portion of our assigned restricted fund balance. I previously talked about that, and so I won't revisit that in great detail here during this presentation, but we will spend time on the fiscal '27 and '28 budget. And so you can see, when you look at our unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2027, it's projected to drop from 10% down to 3.9%. And in order to remain at 3.9%, you'll notice down here into the assigned category, we are projecting utilizing the remaining 1.7 million in assigned fund balance in fiscal '27 in order to remain at that 3.9%. So obviously, some pretty significant budget headwinds starting in fiscal '27. And again, this assumes no changes on the expenditure line, meaning no budget, no, no expenditure reductions, and no increases in revenue as well. So if you, if you note the increase from fiscal '26 to '27, then looking at fiscal '28, you can see where that's significant as well. Again, doing nothing, we would expect a decrease down to a negative 6.5% at, at the end of fiscal '28. So obviously, significant, we would not do this. This would effectively put us in statutory operating debt, which we wouldn't recommend, and that wouldn't have ended before we moved as well. But just to show that trajectory and how significant that is over the next few years.
Awesome. And again, I want to reiterate before we go to the last couple of slides here, that what Bill's showing, we have zero expectation that that's what's going to happen. I remember a few years back, quite a few now, when we had a local paper, and I don't remember what the headline was when we did one of these, but it was like, the district's going to be whatever, millions, you know, then are below zero. It's like, no, we're not. We're, we're going, we, that's, that's the decisions that need to be made, you know, in the coming weeks, that what are we going to do to change that trajectory? Again, you know, whether it's on the expenditure side, whether it's on the revenue side, or whether it's a combination of both. So if we go to the next slide, wanted to, to share information, kind of the two-word summary, if you talk about just kind of big impacts, especially, you know, when it comes to just finances in general, the, the impacts of inflation and decreasing enrollment. And then as always in this, you know, when we talk about managing a, a public school district in Minnesota, when you do have what we, what we are now projecting, where we have that operating expenditure imbalance moving forward, in its very simplest terms, there really are only three options. You need to make budget cuts, you need to increase revenues, or a combination of, of both of those in some way, shape, or form. You know, just kind of as a discussion starter, we look at the '26, '27 school year, it, it would appear that at least, you know, that we would need to make at least $3 million in permanent budget cuts. You're looking at that range of 7 to 9 million. To do that, that, that would seem to be the minimum. You'll notice there's an and with some question marks there, you know, whether, you know, additional budget cuts would be appropriate or not. That's ultimately, as we move down this path, ultimately determined by the school board. There is one opportunity for increased revenues, and that opportunity exists in the form of what folks might call a tax-neutral operating levy increase. We happen to have a situation where we are finalizing, finishing off our community, our taxpayers are finishing the payments on part of our bond debt. That happens in calendar year '26, where there would be $5.1 million less in taxes because those bonds will be paid off, they no longer exist. And, and again, I think many, you know, I'm kind of, you folks know what I'm getting at here when we talk about bond debt and we talk about operating levies. We're talking about two different ways of calculating. One is net tax capacity, the other is referendum market value, way too deep for this evening. But to have an equivalent impact in terms of, you know, making it tax-neutral in the different, especially the residential category of taxpayers, you could run an operating levy for $4.8 million, and that would be in essence tax-neutral. And you might go, well, they don't add up 5.1 and 4.8. Well, the difference is to make sure that, especially the residential taxpayers, would be, you know, their taxes would basically be a wash with the, if they were to pass that operating levy, you know, for the future. And then this all begins, the initiation, if you will, of the planning for fiscal '28 and beyond, because what happens for fiscal '27 absolutely impacts fiscal '28 and beyond. And we'll do the best to continue to, to share information and give accurate information, and really look forward to hearing feedback, questions. Happy to, you know, to do work. I know Bill and his team stand at the ready. Our, you know, our folks from PMA will help us out too as well. And not that I could talk much longer, but I'm going to turn it over to you. Happy to answer questions or write questions down and bring answers back at future meetings.
So Bill, looking at the, I forget what we call the sheet, but the, the projections out, did you include in your calculations for expenditures the potential impact of people not able to?
No, I did not. The assumptions that I included on the expenditure side are the ones that I showed. I did not change anything for.
So there are some expenses that potentially could cause these numbers to be worse than what, or higher than what we see today?
Yes. Generally speaking, on both revenue and expenditure side, I tried to be fairly conservative, but that would be one area where I didn't include the assumption of.
Yeah, because I mean, that's a big dollar amount as well as potential unemployment insurance fund running dry, and then that's back on the school districts potentially. So that would be another expenditure that might not be in here. So that was one question that I had in regards to this. I mean, the other one is, it's not really a question, but more of a, when we went through this in 2020, and put together a test on operating levy that failed, timing with COVID and everything, and then '21 had passed, but we maybe knew that this was going to take us a ways into the 10-year renewal dates or the length of the operating levy, I guess. But looking, when I go back and look at some of the information in this presentation, obviously, at that point in time, inflation was, we couldn't predict the future, right? And the increases in costs have skyrocketed, which would cause us to have a, a deficit much sooner, and that money would last as long as what we had hoped because of that, as well as the enrollment information obviously is a big impact. So, yeah, it's going through that whole process a few years ago, and now, and look at doing this again is, is not fun, I'm sure it's not fun for the, I mean, these are some pretty big, big decisions again that the board will have to make, and as to what is the best, just steal from the last slide, what is the best path forward for our district because it's, I think it becomes even a more challenging time, you know, if asking the community for additional dollars, even though it seems tax-neutral and things are so uncertain out in the world right now with these jobs and, you know, just with everything that's going on with the uncertainty. So, and we know that the next couple of years obviously don't look very favorable either and could also impact and cause these numbers to be worse than what you're presenting based on the amount of available educations. So I think there are a lot of factors here that have to be taken into consideration.
Mr. Chair, my name is Stan. Obviously, something's kind of changed because, you know, flashing back to 2020, that was unique, the shock of being, the landscape we're looking at here seems, at least in our local school districts, having the same or similar challenges or circumstances maybe in the worst of all. And unless something changes with the state funding formula, and I'm not saying it wrong because it's clearly COVID, let's do that, that's, it doesn't seem like there's resources to do that. You know, what are the alternatives? Is there a paradigm shift in terms of what that educational model looks like? Because we're looking at it in terms of lots of effectively in moving forward with the same, same strategy, same plan. In no way am I suggesting like we're going to change our education, let's start. But you would see this in rural districts where you'd see consolidation, where, you know, they would lose it all, and, you know, does that mean some districts get bigger and bring more students in? Or Dr. Redmond does bring out that magic wand, it's all beginning, that's become the shock of being. I, I don't know what the other districts will do when he does that, but levy aside, like, unless there's an opportunity to increase revenue, whether it's state or even local sales staff, again, making it up, or a material reduction in overhead, I mean, beyond even FY '28, it doesn't look favorable. I mean, we're speculating at best, and I applaud the transparency. I applaud the fact that we're looking at it, strategic plan, and being prepared to make some difficult decisions again. But it just speaks volumes to the integrity of you and your team, though, to at least bring it to light.
Knowing that if we look at the statewide financial challenges, I have identified, show that the estimated budget cuts for fiscal year '27 is $7.79 million. And since we haven't passed the budget yet for fiscal year '26, what we have at zero, is it fiscally irresponsible not to make budget cuts for the next fiscal, the next fiscal year?
Dr. Redmond, would you like to speak to that from a timeline standpoint, or do you want to?
No, I can't. I, I think in a perfect world, I, I think you want to act on information when you know it. I know that we, you know, and this is our first public time sharing this, I know that we've already started to make some decisions for next year when we look at hiring and some of those things, knowing that these financial headwinds are coming. I think to do budget cuts, you know, this will sound, I, I absolutely do not mean this to sound in any way negative or deconian, but to do budget cuts well, and there is a difference in doing budget cuts well and doing them haphazardly or sloppily, to do them well, we want to have as high a quality of information as we can, and I believe, you know, our timing in that regards has led us to this point. That magic wand that I don't have, I think there, there were so many things coming out of the 2023 legislature in terms of funding changes and how we calculate and what's ongoing, what's one time, what is this Fed cross subsidy? We still haven't factored all of that in. We just talked about paid family medical leave. I think we're estimating that's roughly a quarter million dollars a year. We're looking at enrollment trends that have, are, we're in the midst of kind of a shift that we're trying to interpret. So I think in a formal sense, in terms of staffing and prepping for next school year, we're, we're really beyond the bulk of the, the major staffing. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't, you know, that as we begin to look at next year and as we travel through next year, that we wouldn't make reductions where it's appropriate. But I think in terms of a formal But I think in terms of a formal process to lay it out, the other piece I think is really important, is to give a community, you know, a voice, whether that's even speaking at board meetings, or if it's through, you know, some type of a vote on an operating levy. So, don't disagree with you, that the best time to do it was like, you know, was.
And I'm not talking about the seven to nine million dollars. I was basically, you know, one, one and a half, two million dollars in this fiscal year just to, you know, you used to cumulative effective those cuts, and then all at once in fiscal year twenty seven, it's not as, it's not as bad.
Agreed. And I think we, you know, we did want to get into necessarily those specifics, I think we've already kind of started down that path, and we, we do, with the decreasing enrollment, we, you know, we got built in adjustments for next year, but again, we don't tend to count that as budget cuts, but certainly, I think, moving forward and, you know, where, you know, what is, what does that mean, where you're belt tightening along the way? And we have, and I don't want to get into the specific situations, because I don't think we've fully actualized it, you know, sometimes there's people involved or positions involved, but we do, I, I'm well aware, we had one department where we talked about where we expect them to be in two or three years in terms of their size and scope and structure, where they, they decided not to hire, I, I believe, and I'm going to look at Jim, two additional people for next year, so.
It's something.
Yeah, it is, and that, you know, and that's in the neighborhood, that of, you know, probably a quarter million dollars off the top of my head. So, agree with you in concept, and I think even in practice and what we're doing. And it's, to be honest, it was, we did some of that last time, when we went through this, I had to make budget cuts. I think that's a, that's an important piece of that. The other important piece, which, you know, is we've watched other districts, and I think sometimes they struggle, and it truly is, if you're going to make budget cuts, doing it well is important. There is, when you're a service industry, eighty to eighty-five percent of what we spend money on is people. You cannot shrink the size of a school district without cutting people, and that is a, a very hard, cold truth, but it is, you know, that's, that's what we're talking about when we're talking about budget cuts.
Just very quickly, two other, I'll be a very minor areas that we're looking at for next year, transportation at the high school, we're looking at possibly changing some of our models to be a little bit more efficient, they're not talking about walking zones or anything like that, I'm just talking about making sure we're fully utilizing air buses, how do we route our buses at the high school, so maybe that could result in a little bit of savings.
Any kind of efficiency that could be found in any aspects will help the bottom line going forward, a hundred percent.
I'm still hopeful that our work with School and Mitchell and our non-aging better areas, it's been, it's been very minor so far, but I'm hopeful that some of those areas can result in some savings.
Your point's well taken.
I think the other thing, the challenge with the decline in enrollment is that as these smaller classes progress through the district and they get into the high school, we also lose funding because there's an additional kicker, the one point two versus the one, so there's additional funding, and so when those kids, when they are smaller classes, the funding is actually probably a little bit even more so less.
Yes.
Because of that.
Yeah, the, the seven thousand four hundred eighty-one that we're projecting next year in state aid, that's based on a one point, one point old pupil, seven through twelve is a one point two multiplied by that number, so it further.
And I would even, I, I would add on to that, when we talk about the conservative nature of making projections, that's that part of the enrollment piece that we're starting to see some different things. I think traditionally, you know, we had a lot of kids spend all thirteen years, starting kindergarten, go through grade twelve in shock of being, we're now seeing, and whether it's a, you know, a one year or two year uptick, but we're seeing students join our school district in greater numbers at grades other than kindergarten, you know, in other words, families moving in with maybe a, a sixth grader and a second grader, and that, that's kind of a, not that it didn't happen before, it absolutely did, but we're seeing more in the way of numbers, and again, we're always hesitant to go, is that, we don't know what that is. We know it's starting to happen, is it a short term thing, or is it the beginning of a different trend? And, you know, I spent, I mean, I spent a long time in Mata Bida, very different community, kind of landlocked number, but there, there literally wasn't housing stock, and it was really routine, where the elementary school without open enrollment would have been about half the size of their, you know, secondary population, because families would often move in with kids, you know, in secondary schools. They just, there wasn't enough housing available, what was available was very expensive, especially, you know, for most families with really young kids. So, I don't know, you know, what we're seeing, we, we continue to see growth, we continue to see great things happening in our city, we saw some of that earlier. You know, we kind of talk about, people are, are moving in, but the one constant, and I've studied them again, birth rates are still, they, they have not, that curve has not started to bounce back within Scott County, I looked at the data, twenty-four data is coming out at twenty, you know, through the year twenty twenty-three, that isn't, that isn't moving back. People are, people are having fewer children.
Well, without the housing being built, maybe everybody would trip like in seventh grade.
Yeah. Do you know, family?
No, I don't. But maybe, you know, hundreds of houses being built, there's, there's always the chance that the enrollment numbers are not as bad as, as projected, but you just, you don't know who's moving in, you don't know if they're even going to the school in this district if they have students. It's just, the unknown is unfortunately too unknown for, for all the housing developments.
And, you know, for, for us, we're dependent on one revenue stream, really, and we can't raise our prices to get more revenue, and we can't sell more product to get more revenue. It's, it's a fixed, a long thing that we get to work with, and unfortunately, we can't control how much gas goes up, and does it mean that we only get to pay X because we only have so much money? That's the unfortunate thing about, you know, school finance versus a business.
I guess I would add to that, though, you know, I, I think our, our product in shock fee is really good right now, I mean, I, I, you know, the, you, it would really be great to get input, I don't think it's survey to people coming in, why they're coming in, because I think we got a very thing here, and you would like to think that people are attracted to the cap model and, and the great things we have going on in shock fee, and then just piggyback on that to earlier comments, while, you know, in the, in the middle of hoping to attract people into the great thing we got going, and we want to make cuts prematurely and make, make, make ourselves less attractive, you know, which is a very good point, yes. When we're, when we're trying to get people to, to move in and possibly open enroll or whatever, but, I mean, there's no good, no good time to do it, to make, to make the cuts, and then, and then, you know, pivoting from that over to the, the, you know, the neutral levy possibility for this, there's just no good time to do that. You know, just thinking back to twenty twenty, that was a terrible time to put it on the ballot, just with everything going on, and, but we kind of had to do it with, you know, knowing, and, and it almost passed despite all the headwinds against it. But if it had, that would have been the optimal time to do it. The impact to the taxpayers would have been less if it had passed, because we ended up having to put one on the ballot next year, the following year, that caused taxpayers more, just because of what had changed in the, in the year in the interim. So, just thinking for now, the tax neutral levy now, the timing is terrible, but having to do one later is going to be worse, it's going to be harder, it's going to be harder to market, because now it's a tax increase, no matter how else you say it, if we wait till next year to do it, it's a tax increase. There's just, there's just no good time to do it, but all those variables, it's definitely worth the conversation sooner rather than later, because it would have to go on the ballot this fall if we did it, right? So, it's a lot of these.
Bill, before I have million dollars in additional revenue that that would bring to make it tax neutral, is that even enough to rescue us, I guess?
So, so, I think that's illustrated very well in Dr. Redmond's slide, where we talk about, right now, based on our current assumptions, projecting between seven and, and nine million dollar shortfall in fiscal twenty seven. So to answer your question, the tax neutral operating levy would generate, on the revenue side, four point eight million in additional revenue, so it, it would not cover the expected shortfall entirely in fiscal twenty seven, obviously.
That's just for one year, I mean, that's for one fiscal year, I'm thinking, because that would potentially be ten years if that's what we did? And so, how, I mean, if that isn't even going to be enough to cover in year one?
Can I, I just want to make sure we're clear on that slide? The, and, and I think you are, I just, yeah, we're talking, when we say budget cuts on the left side of that, it's the at least three million in permanent budget cuts and adjustments based on declining enrollment, and the operating levy, which together would be seven point eight million, roughly in the middle of that range, and I think that's that part of projecting, you know, to try to predict what would happen in twenty seven, twenty eight, there is likely still some more to do, not at that same, nowhere near that same magnitude, at this point, I think we, again, we spend most of our time really focused on twenty six, twenty seven, and I know sometimes people go, well, why, why is it a range? Give us an exact dollar number. Well, we could, but we probably did right in the middle of that range, and the truth is, there is a range with the stuff we've already mentioned, with enrollment, and with paid family medical leave, and a lot of other things that we can't predict. The following year, we think there'd be, you know, if we still are declining enrollment, we would have to make those adjustments, which we always do, and, you know, somewhere probably in the one to five million dollar range, but that is a really loose projection, but not of the, you know, the magnitude of the seven to nine, but that's, that's all our, our work here the next couple of months.
Yeah, I mean, I just think about, you know, the last one that we had was to take us a long ways into that ten years while we're at year five or five, where this would kick in if it was approved, so, and looking at, okay, four point eight million, even three, you know, million in permanent budget cuts, to me, that doesn't take us too far past that school year, and then we're, we're in the same position again, unless something changes where school funding is, has a new way to be, schools have a new way to fund it, and like, it's better, but I just.
Real quick on that, yeah, if you look at the twenty seven, twenty eight, it's a hundred and forty million in expenses, a hundred and twenty-six million in routing, that's a fourteen million dollar, this is, this is eight, and I know that it'd be three million and three million in cuts for, for twenty seven, twenty eight, but it just, if anything, it's a, it's a bandaid that doesn't fix anything much going forward beyond a levy this year.
If you go back to the AMSD one, and I think that's really, oh, no, sorry, the graph, I don't have that, there were two of that, I mean, this is that, part of that picture of, you know, we're a service industry, we pay people, they live in the real world, you know, they strongly desire that their salary and benefits keep pace with inflation, our main funding source doesn't keep pace with inflation, that is at the crux of the challenge for every school district in the state. And I think, yeah, and that's why, and to Joe's point, excuse me, that slide that had, you know, budget cuts on one side and the operating levy on the other, it says at least three million, but I think that, to, I, again, we're not making that decision today, but trying, you know, from our perspective, looking at that, Bill and I, that's the floor for what we do for twenty six, twenty seven. And if there's no operating levy, like before, as you had, three billion plus four point eight million, now you have at least seven point eight million in budget cuts. But that, that was meant to be, that's a reasonable swing at it, but it doesn't, as we just talked about, it doesn't solve, you know, it initiates something for the future, and more to kind of Joe's point, you know, as we dial this in, the more you do in that first year, it counts every year out, and, but I think our, you know, our, our challenge, I think this graph really shows, you know, just the, kind of the overall funding flaw of, you know, people live in the real world, and, you know, we've been, and we did what we said we could do at that last operating levy. I think in terms of trying to predict the economic future, I don't think anybody saw inflation jump like that over us the same period of time, and, you know, for us, I, I don't think we saw the, you know, we were one of the first districts to discover the declining birth rates. I still remember going to my, my superintendent years ago, hey, you know there's declining birth rates? What are you talking about? And, you know, so, and that, our, our funding system in the state of Minnesota, if you're growing, it's advantageous for a school district, if you're declining, it's really challenging because, you know, it, you, you can't offset that, that decrease in funding very easily.
Well, I also think close to Bill and everybody at the time in administration, like you and Dave Ornolfski, when COVID and the S R funds came in, that we utilized those funds appropriately and accordingly, that would hurt us in the future, and not every school district has done that, and that, that actually has helped us, I think significantly, because I know a lot of your school districts quite often say, well, you know, we ran out of the S R money, well, everybody did, and, you know, we didn't go and add fifty teachers with our S R money, and we added more than we did to, to support our students, but we didn't go crazy that, because we knew it wasn't sustainable, we knew the money was going to be gone at some point.
We used one time revenue as one time expense, and it's the right thing to do. Wow.
One of the things that we talked about in the meeting is even, some of these variables end up being more positive than what even we're projecting, that, that there's a need for revenue down the road, right? Like, if enrollment improves some of the positivity that we've seen from the city, the growth of our, our town, something's going to have to change down the road here. So, to that point of, you know, considering a levy being, and asking the taxpayers to pay again, and, and, you know, part of that responsibility is we haven't had to build anything, and bonds are dropping off, so that's to some degree a credit to the investment that was made earlier in the years over here, that might be more tolerable for people to handle versus budget cuts. We just throw that around a lot in here, you know, as a tool to manage what we have to here, but that is teachers, that is classroom sizes, those are the things that none of us want, right? So, if you're going to have me go out and ask the community to do one of those two things, that might be, maybe if we have some positive trend and we have a little more revenue resource, to me, is an early, you know, early indication of, yeah, I, I don't want to action that again, but it might be the best choice. It's obviously the things we have to talk about and consider, but the other thing is, this is not a shocky problem, you know, we've talked about this all day, this is the whole state's feeling this, and the more, the more dogs bark and, you know, the more drama creates at the senate or at the state, so hopefully, this is a bringing up crisis for everybody, that maybe there's some other positivity that's down the road that will have to happen, I mean, not this year, unfortunately, but we, we have to consider all circumstances, right? The worst case scenarios, I'd hate to make drastic cuts that things have resulted, and we're looking for good people two years later, because it's not as bad as we predicted as well, both sides of that.
And one thing I'd like, sorry, Ken, one thing I'd like from our house is the transparency of all this. We have a, the budget looking for fiscal year twenty six, we're still at ten percent. We could have just pushed this off right here and not worked on it, but instead, we're looking at tackling a problem that's going to come up in a couple of years now, instead of waiting till the last minute, and I, I think that's just, that's kind of a bold move, but it's a, it's a correct thing.
Well, we can't keep taking money out of savings and putting it in our checking either, you know, so.
That's also very, you know.
That's how we're selling next year. That's kind of the long transition, for sure.
I, I was just in comment, there was a statement made a few speakers back about the unpredictability of all this, and it's easy to look in the out years and say, you know, doing this now will necessarily help us in the out years, but the reality is, who would have predicted six to eight percent inflation? Who would have predicted S R funds? I mean, you think about all of the, the components that have come up over the last five years, and who knows what the next five years entails, which is why, you know, for me, the focus is on what do we need to do now to continue to keep the district moving in the right direction?
knowing that we, we can't predict the future. And, you know, Bill working on out years has to be one of the worst jobs in America because there's, there's absolutely no idea what's around the corner.
And nobody ever like gives them a lot of applause for that. Like, well, you did a great job.
He's got awards. He's like awarded.
But even, you know, I, I smile when I said that, but that's part of the inherent flaws in school funding. We talk about the math doesn't matter. And when you carry that out, if, you know, if you're, you know, if you're not keeping pace with the rate of inflation, it's really tough to run anything successfully.
Yeah. So I guess a question to Bill and like anybody who's done this for a long time. Have you ever done one of these out year, long-term projections and said, oh, everything's great. We're going to have ten percent more revenue in four years projected. Has that ever been true?
Not for me.
No, I've never been in a district where the enrollment's grown that fast. And that's the one place where if you're growing fast enough, you know, as long as you have the building space and the capacity to house students, because that's part of it too.
Well, that's if we continue to lose a hundred and eighty students every year, we'd be talking about losing a school. I mean, in our reality, if you project that out far enough, you know, we can't continue that trend.
Although, and we, we talked about this in years past too, it's like closing a school really does not save you a lot of money, you know, unfortunately. So.
Well, and even, I know, I think Tim Brophy was a community study. One of the first tasks assigned to me by the board, and I started on October thirtieth, I think, of twenty eighteen, was, hey, how are we doing the capacity? Are we going to need to build another school? And we did that study. And when we shared that, I can't remember, it was the summer of twenty nineteen. We said, hey, we feel really good for five years. I don't know, six to ten, you know, because we were based on trends and, and population growth and things. And that really kind of predates where people went, wait a second, there is something happening. And again, not just a shockity thing with birth rates declining. That is across the state. It's across our nation. And it's actually somewhat worldwide. And so, you know, because that was even part of when we, you know, I think it was December of twenty one, we hired Hazel Reinhardt to do another, you know, study, enrollment study. And that wasn't because we were, you know, we saw some blips and we thought it was COVID and whatever. It was again to fill out that picture. And she came back with some data. And went, well, what, what, what the heck's going on? And then she redid part of it. And then we really dug in and talked with county health officials and state health officials and went, oh my gosh, we're seeing declines in birth rates. And they look like a, a much longer trend than COVID related, if you will. And I, like I said earlier, I still remember talking to other superintendents who looked at me and, you know, like I was crazy, which happens occasionally anyhow. But I, I go, no, this is real. And they went back and checked with their, you know, and other counties and stuff and went, oh my gosh, our birth rates are declining too. And that's also part of, you know, kind of exacerbating that problem. So.
I think that the problem with, with birth rates, um, I think when, you know, when you start to have, my wife and I had, had kids twenty-four years ago. Uh, I think I was twenty-nine, she was twenty-six. I think people are starting to have kids now at thirty-nine and thirty-six for the first time. It'd be very interesting to see the average age of people having their first kid. And all at once, there's that ten-year gap where there's just not that many people having kids just because this generation, uh, generation X having kids at twenty-eight, millennials having kids at thirty-three. You know, maybe they'll be thirty-eight. So there's going to be a huge gap. And that's where we're having this issue right now. So.
I, I do think though that we have to continue to look to the future and the modeling that you're doing. Because a previous board had hair on fire because they didn't do that. And it caused a lot of stress and turmoil in our district. And I don't think any, I mean, Joe and I, we came on board and how much more did we have? A million dollars in the, in the fund, in the unserved fund balance and.
It might have been, it might have actually at the end of fiscal year nineteen been close to two.
Two and a half, but at one point before that, it was six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand, something under, I remember that.
Right. And so we just need to remember that we have to look to the future and make sure that we are doing what we can to support our students. And as painful as it is it can be, and all those models are always deficit looking. But I, I think that if we didn't do that, we would be doing ourselves a disservice to our community by not, um, not, um, to me, this is being a, you know, a good steward of taxpayer dollar. Because if we, you know, if we just constantly look one or two years out, that's going to hurt us. And we're all of a sudden going to have hair on fire and have more people in our community upset with us than all of a sudden having excess revenue. I mean, that's just from even just a business standpoint of running a business, you have to look out to the future and what potentially could happen. I, I just think about my company right now and the tariffs at the international global company that we are facing and we don't plan for that. But we have to continue to move forward and figure out how we're going to adapt. And to me, the school district is, is no different. We have to continue to look to the future and figure out how we can adapt and be good, good steward of that money now. Because my company can raise our prices, school district can't.
I, I agree wholeheartedly with that. And I, I'll forget the years, but I know Jim and I, we went back and did like Hazel Reinhardt did a enrollment study in two thousand and three. And then I think I'm kind of looking at Jim, the other one was twenty thirteen?
Thirteen, fourteen. I was on that. I was on that community task force for the rest.
And then we hired him in twenty-one and got a report in twenty-two. It's also why, you know, I just mentioned, we're digging into birth rates and looking, you know, and they're loading that data in, in the county and the state. And even, you know, Bill Reynolds presenting earlier, we be, you know, really consistently with Michael Kersky and his team at the city and trying to, you know, even what type, what type of construction is happening, where is it happening and work closely. So, uh, I, you know, we're never going to be perfect at it, uh, but I think we're putting the time and energy and effort into, you know, trying to figure out what, what may happen next and have at least an educated, you know, kind of a path forward with that. And we'll obviously continue to do that. But we work really, really hard on that end. So it's certainly, you know, information at one time can change quickly, as you just alluded to. You know, that, that's become part of, I'd argue that's become part of our DNA as a leadership team that, you know, we, you know, we're going to have to do the absolute best we can.
I think this is just another example of how do we prepare our students for the future.
Absolutely.
Because the kids in our buildings are our future. They are our future workforce. And so how do we best make sure that our school district is providing them the opportunity to set them up to be successful and looking to the future and from a financial standpoint of our district is in Shonda's best interest and first of wings and everyone else that's sitting there, who wants to do it.
To those points, if we're looking towards the future and actually, I think we have, have, have a partial game, so we'll remember. Question like, how quickly will we know anymore on enrollment and things like that? Would we have any updated numbers that we can feel good about by September? I mean, if we were even talking about potentially a levy in November, what, what are the steps that we need to take from now until that point in time? How much time do we need to learn to that?
We need to push that determined by the end of July because of, isn't it ninety days?
Yeah, it'd be the middle of July, which probably for us is the, um, the June quarter.
And so what, what, what other information between now and July are we going to be able to come up with that we can count on, you know, reality, other than the first year preparations?
Well, since you raised the question at the finance committee, I've been digging, I've got notes all over on some of the enrollment. Where did it come from? You know, I can explain where those numbers came from. And it was really looking one year out. And that's partly why we have a range on those numbers because it, you know, even this year, we're running what thirty-two kids better than we projected. It's a lot better than running thirty-two kids worse than projected. However, and then we're looking, you know, we're digging into those and trying to find trends and, and where we do that, making adjustments in how we staff. But that's even why we're looking at birth rates. We've worked, um, we've got a lot of work to do still with the county as a partner. I think things are going really well with the attendance. The other area that we've said we want to work with them is let us know, you know, they, they have, they have greater access to knowing where every child between birth and age five is that we do. And so trying to find ways, we've done some of that. But we've got more work to do because the sooner we, you know, that's all part of, you know, who's showing up in kindergarten. We do track that. And we've got different things and we meet monthly. And so there's a lot of work going on that, but. And we weren't going to make the decision on everything this evening. So we're going to bring more, expect more information at every board meeting, you know, from now through, quite a lot.
That seems like a good place to, to move on unless anybody else has any comments? Uh, great discussion. Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is item six point six, the twenty twenty-five community conversation plan. Here present is Tiffany Olson, our director of communications and strategic development. And take a minute to get set up while that director.
I am the board official, Mr. Smith, and members of the board. But if I am too efficient, please ask additional questions. Would you like me to wait for?
No, no, let's, let's move.
Okay. So the point of this presentation here is simply informational, which you know of our plan. There'll be a timeline at the end. I will go through some of these slides quickly and mainly some on the, you know, what we're doing and the timeline performance. There's pieces that will be continually included in the graphic so that you're fully aware. But as you know, as a district, once we got through COVID and some communication challenges, we have been working to be consistent on an annual basis to engage our community, um, just to get that anonymous, unbiased, measurable feedback. We've had longitudinal feedback as a district for quite some time now, um, that we want to make sure year over year, especially with the more efficiently priorities that we have insight into. This community conversation, and we call it that, if you recall, because of the method that we use, we're not using a survey monkey. We're also not doing a statistically sound tax tolerance or a phone call through a big utility where you're getting very specific questions on demographics. This is one of many engagement opportunities. It is not the only one. But we are at that time where we want to make sure we are still hearing from members of the community and that we continue to have that trusted environment. And this is one of the ways that we do that. So generally, when we do these, we have a very specific target audience meeting. It's actually, I should be counter with that. It's for greater school and community. Um, it's not just for staff. It's not just for students. It's not just for a particular grade. And that's very important that we want all our staff here. We want those that are engaged with us. Doesn't mean that those that I referenced don't participate, but this is for the entire school community to be able to provide their feedback. What you see on the screen here is a pretty standard participation behavior, if you will, where when you're looking at those that have students in our school district, generally we get more engagement on these surveys from the E through five than we do at the secondary level. So it's always a goal to increase that. And again, we have many staff members that also serve the roles parent and guardian that would obviously receive this. The slide here gives you snapshots of things you've seen before as far as those that have participated. We have some soft goals. And what you really want to see here is we're trying to find realistic projections of we want to increase engagement. We want to increase diversity. And we really just want to ensure that when folks are engaging with this opportunity, they're providing as much feedback and not falling out in the process. If you recall the structure of our community conversation, because it is through thought exchange, there is an open-ended question that serves almost like a social forum, if you will, where you're able to check back and write comments of those that are provided. And then there are your closed-ended survey questions. Generally, depending on where we've been this year, there's been a few questions that don't impact the longitudinal ones where we adjust out based on where we're at. So if you recall last year, that was capital projects, safety and security. So there's an opportunity for district financial planning to be included in this year as well, which is a general feedback opportunity. Open-ended question is listed here. I'm not going to read it for everyone. We didn't owe words to nothing. Again, we're looking for clarity, looking at things from our last thought exchange on how we can get, um, the most feedback and have the most clear question for those that are participating. I will go over this at all. Uh, I will go over this in depth. There are various ways that we wish to promote this. Back on that target audience slide, we do want to be greater with our student engagement on this. So it will obviously lead into a lot of folks in the secondary levels, middle and high school. There's some great opportunities with advisory from middle school. And obviously they have engaged student school board members that can give us some tips and others to see if we can get, um, student participation in this as well. And then what we're doing with the data, I think you're all pretty familiar. We dive into this deep. We have development sessions where we look at this. Our leadership team is looking at it. Again, it's only one of many different data points, but you'll be seeing this in the future. And this is the last piece. This is the timeline. So I'm here today to be able to give you that precursor. The goal is after the month of May, relatively speaking, between all states, that is our engagement period. That's where we're trying to get as many, um, in our feedback as possible. Uh, and then we review those results in June. Uh, and then have a full presentation at the June ninth, um, meeting to be able to share that with the public. So it's a very targeted timeline and I'm happy to answer any questions on this. But again, there's additional detail in the presentation that I, I love.
Is there more questions to please?
Yeah.
Are we going to have any questions, um, in regards to the previous topic that we just discussed in that one?
We have two questions, or at least the opportunity to be very consistent with what we did for the capital project lobby. So the intent is yes, to move to that.
So we'll have that data before we, um, have to make a decision on what our.
If you have a pair of that, yes.
Great question.
It's always great work.
Yeah, just you put a ton of effort into this, just to see it evolve. But I think it's really insightful. So thank you for the.
Absolutely. And if anyone from the tech side that wants to see the backend, it is so cool what we can analyze and do. And AI driven as far as how we analyze it. So we get really excited with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next on our agenda is item seven, policy second reading. And if anyone's new person.
So we just had the first reading, uh, not too long ago, I don't know if you think so. As you know, there's, you know, new changes since then. So I guess this is kind of just our formal, these are the things that are changing. I encourage everybody to, um, read everything, especially the title line changes. And I guess, um, just questions or discussion for tonight.
Any questions for Chad? Because policy is one of the most important things we do, uh, but it's really hard to get the, uh, get excited around, you know, just get everybody jumping up and down and dancing. But, but it is such, it's such a critical role for, for like the purpose of, of the school board. You know, it's kind of one of the key meat and potatoes of things we do. So we definitely need to take it seriously, but.
So yeah, I don't know the, the origin of like why this is referred to as the first reading, the second reading because, uh, because it's really not practical to actually read them. I, it's probably not fair for me to summarize them for you, unless, you know, I love this editorializing. So it's really just, this is the announcement of what's being changed on these things.
Used to have to do it with paper copies and hook it in a form after. A white hair and a purple lighter than.
I've heard tale of this.
So why start that or start one?
The fact, the framework that is in lets itself to doing that. And I don't want us to go back to Ruben's lender, but there's actually steps here why you have to do a first second reading, try to improve it. It's.
Well, you know, you could probably stop us by going, we're reviewing every single policy 100 through 900 in one school year, so.
As long as it's wood-fired pizza.
Come on over because I'm sure Dr. Horton would love to have some help with that. I'm very glad.
Any questions for Chad or further discussion? Thank you, Chad. Next up is item eight, Committee Reports and Other Information. Let's start with Nick.
Oh, sweet, okay. Well, I have a fun financing facilities meeting right before this. And then what's it been, about three weeks? We had that AMSD Council webinar, I did Friday morning with some interesting things in it, that some is above my pay grade for sure, and some of the future pension fund challenges down the road that I, it's been brought up a couple times in that meetings. And they had a couple legislators on there too, that are part of the education committee, giving a little quick overview of what's going on at the Capitol. Dr. Ruben and I have gone to a few different schools now, and he graciously took me to Eagle Creek a couple of weeks ago, where we first break, we went, I think, which has been fun. I really enjoyed that. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to walk around with you, get to talk to some teachers and see some kids lab in action and ask us, who the heck are these two guys standing in our room? You know, so it's been, it's been something that I've really.
Glad you joined, that's been great.
And we have literacy data at Capitol next Thursday. We're gonna get a couple of our folks in the, in the house there to see if I can maybe try to bring a meeting or two afterwards if it lines up, probably is heading for the day. But other than that, nothing else.
Personnel meeting tonight is well-intended. And last week, I can't remember what day it was anymore, but I went to the APAC
Thank you. Christine?
Personnel meeting tonight is well-intended. And last week, I can't remember what day it was anymore, but I went to the APAC meeting that they had at my school. And that was really interesting. Learned a lot more about, a lot more detail about the American Indian education in our district and the different events and how we go about planning events and the incorporation of curricula. And learned a lot about probably putting the budget together for the year. Yeah, so it was, it was a really good event. I encouraged everybody to sign up to go to one. It's a committee of 12, 12 adults and two students. So, yeah, it was, it was good. Southwest Metro meeting tomorrow night, which we talked about. And then Friday, I have a scale, special meeting as well, so.
Thank you. I'll be attending the next APAC, May back meeting on the 23rd, somewhere in Florida. So glad you were there. Finance and personnel today, interviews this week. And then my wife and I attended that Never Shake event on Friday, which is not directly school district related, but involves the McNallys, who are, you know, members of the district. Crystal, who used to, you know, work for Dr. Ruben. Yeah, it's just a second annual event, was a, was a great event.
Finance and facilities, we basically went over the proposed budget and the planning model. So we got an hour of that for an hour here, so it's been a long fiscal day. Friday, I attended graduation at Takata, they had five graduates. Just absolutely loved their ceremony. I know they'll have a larger one. I think a date or two before graduation here, I think 6th through 7th of June. And if you can make it, please attend. And as this is volunteer appreciation month, I was speaking with the head of the graduation party committee a couple of weeks ago. And there was only five people on the committee that do it, that have been helping. And none of them have any students in the, in the school district anymore. And she was like, we might do it one more year, but they, they are, they just want volunteers. And I just, if you notice, people who are graduate, are graduating, eighth graders, ninth graders that, that want to help out with the graduation, to have them get involved with it or the graduation party. A couple of years from now, just might go away. So please, if you have students in high school or middle school, please consider joining that graduation party.
Thanks, Chad. For me, yeah, nothing much to report for community engagement. The aspiring teachers signing day, we have two of them, that's coming up, I see. So that's exciting. Oh, and then I have the framework, signal meeting is on next week.
Yep. I've got Pearson Advisory Council meeting later this month. I also snuck into the Takata graduation as well. And I echo exactly what my colleague, Mr. August, has all great to see the connection that's made between the students and educators there, just magic happens. And I was looking, there is an important date that I don't see listed here, but Thursday, May 1st, at 7:00 PM, there's a virtual meeting for, I think, the Shock of the Mountain Life Team. Or certainly student athletes, but from a volunteerism perspective, you know how to ride a bike, come be a coach, go train it, so. Jim?
Yeah, just a lot of things looking at the next year right now. Kindergarten Roundup starts tomorrow night at two of our sites, Eagle Creek and Route. I would point out that we already have 256 kindergartners enrolled, which I think is a sign of a well-centered working. We're getting students enrolled earlier, doesn't necessarily mean there'll be more, but I would assume we are losing fewer to other districts and charter schools because of the aggressive, more aggressive tactics we're taking to get kids enrolled. And then following suit, middle school will have passports, middle school, I believe. So we're definitely starting to, you know, get new students in and prepare us all to the fall.
Emily?
I, I have a lot of stuff that I'll share on the ramp and save you for today, but there's a lot of great stuff going on. So we'll do our best to try and keep you updated. And there's also a lot of good system and structure conversations going on with our leadership group to make sure, we're already looking ahead to August, September, and all of those other things too. So we're kind of following suit with you folks, so trying to get 12 months ahead and as much as we can.
Dr. Ruben?
I've spoken more than I've not.
Thank you, everybody. Next on our agenda is item nine, upcoming meetings and important dates. Everybody's alluded to a few of these. Are there any others here we should bring attention to, in particular, attention to?
No, I think Jim did a good summary lots with middle school and kindergarten this week. And I also know there's some fun concerts and things going on at our elementary school, so.
With that, I would adjourn the motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Peterson, second by Aldrich, any discussion? See none, follows in favor? Aye, opposed? Need adjourned.